Good evening, everyone. If everyone could please take their seats. We're just about ready to get started. Thank you all for coming tonight and welcome to tonight's public hearing on the FY 2018 advertised budget. I'm Tammy Darnatt Kofax. I'm the lead district representative to the board and this year I'm serving as the school board's budget chair. I will be sharing management of this meeting with Mr. Ilion Moon. He is serving as the school board's budget vice chair this year. So I want to thank you for coming out tonight and taking time from your evening to talk to us about your passions with the budget. At this time, if you've not already done so, please provide your written comments to one of our clerks seated to my right. That's the ladies in the first row right there. And please take this time to turn off or silence your cell phones. Tonight, our speakers list keeps growing, so we had 74 at the time. We probably have somewhere around 76 to 78. And 20, 20-0 of those will be students and our student speakers will be the first to speak. Each speaker is allotted three minutes and to be respectful of everyone, we ask that you please stay within that time limit. The deputy clerk who sits in that first row will start the timer when you begin to speak and you'll be able to see your time right there on the podium. A buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes and please, please conclude your comments at that time. We have to be really respectful of the time for the other people who are waiting because this is going to be a long evening. Three names and their speakers will be announced at a time. When you hear your name and speaker number, please move closer to these first rows in the auditorium. And if speakers are not here when their name is called, those names will be called again at a later time. If you have not registered to speak but would like an opportunity to address the board, please see one of the clerks to sign up for the five extra reserved speaker slots. I believe most of those might be filled up at this time, but you can check with them. Your name will be called after all the registered speakers. Also, there will be an opportunity for individuals to speak if there are no show slots remaining at the end of the hearing. After all the registered speakers have addressed the board, Ilion or I will announce whether or not there are new slots available. And for this, we ask that you state your full name when you speak. After you've spoken, please see the clerks so she may collect your contact information for the record. Throughout the evening, you may notice that some of us will leave the table, but that does not mean we were not listening. We have access in the back to a television that is broadcasting this public hearing. And also, Mr. Moon or I may from time to time repeat some of these instructions that we've just given because not everyone is probably here at this time and will be coming at a later time. So with that information, let's begin and let us start with our first student speakers. And if Rachel Lapham, Melina Iyer, and Gabby Heller can please come up. Rachel, you are number one, followed by Melina and then Gabby.
Get right here and put your hands up. Konnichiwa. Watashi wa Fuchu desu. Watashi wa Kyusan desu. Watashi wa Sanju desu. Hi, my name is Rachel and I am nine years old in third grade. I attended Great Falls Elementary School and I'm out of district. I am speaking to you tonight because I want you to keep the language immersion program. Learning another language is challenging and fun. I started learning Japanese in first grade the minute I walked into my classroom. Most of my friends are from other base schools and they attended GFES through the language immersion. Some of my friends are native speakers and they are like me, learning another language. My parents drive me twice a day to and from my school. They are dedicated to the immersion program too. Please think about the end result. If you cancel the immersion, what will you do with all the students returning to their base schools? You will still need the teachers and buses to support them. In closing, please vote to continue the language immersion program. I would be really sad not to be able to learn Japanese and be with my friends. Arigatou gozaimasu. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Rachel.
I apologize. I'm a parent and I don't know how I got in the middle of the students. I can wait till the students are done.
I would appreciate that greatly. Thank you so much. Ms. Gabby Heller, followed by Maya Rodriguez. Oh, one second, please. There was a slight change. Are you Maya? Are you Maya? No, are you Hannah? Yes, okay Hannah, please come up. This is Hannah Evans.
Hi, my name is Hannah Evans and I'm a fourth grader at London Town Elementary School, Spanish immersion. A few months ago, a new student named Ashley came into my class. Ashley only speaks Spanish and within about five minutes, she was surrounded by other kids in our classroom to meet her and become her friend. By lunch, Ashley had a problem. Everyone wanted to sit next to her. She said, "Todos los personas quieren sentarse conmigo, tu y tu y tu y tu." Everyone loves to sit next to me, you and you and you and you and you. If we got rid of immersion, people like Ashley would have a really hard time making friends and learning what they need to know. And then our schools would have to get extra help. If you cut immersion, many friends may get separated and some immersion students would have to go to their neighborhood school and they would be like a new student. This would be really hard, especially for kids like Ashley.
Thank you. Next is Maya Rodriguez, followed by Alina Gobadi and then Jabron Hutchins.
Hi, my name is Maya Rodriguez. I'm a third grade Japanese Filipino-American student who is studying Japanese as part of the immersion program at Great Falls Elementary School. My sister is a first grade student at the Great Falls Japanese immersion program and I have a cousin in first grade Spanish immersion at Ravensworth Elementary School. I would like to talk about why I think canceling immersion programs is wrong. Learning a new language is definitely worth it. Most of my classmates are not Japanese-American and they work as hard, maybe harder than I do, to learn Japanese. It would be wasteful if you canceled the immersion program when so many students are trying their very best to learn. My classmate, sister, and cousin would be extremely upset if they weren't able to get the full experience of learning a new language. Two years ago, when I was in first grade, Ms. Obama and Mrs. Abe, the wife of Japan's Prime Minister, visited Great Falls Elementary School and I was part of the first and second grade class that performed two songs for them. After our performance, Ms. Obama told the entire school of the importance of learning new languages. She said that learning a new language is how we relate with and build friendships between different cultures and countries. Many of us agree with her. My family and I like to travel a lot, so I know from experience that Ms. Obama was right and that learning a new language is how we connect with people from other countries and cultures. Immersion programs also enhance learning. Did you know that my classmates and I are learning the three Japanese alphabets? It takes a long time to memorize each alphabet, but in the end, when you get it, everyone feels excited and happy. It is definitely worth the effort. There are probably millions of people who still want to learn a new language and I want to help make sure that they get the same opportunity as I did. Students in first grade have not yet gotten the full language immersion experience. They probably want to learn much more. We have terrific teachers and they work really hard to teach their students and give them a good education, even in a different language. For all the people supporting the immersion programs, keep it up and thank you for your support. Imagen puro y amado, cancel shinaide kudasai. Please do not cancel the immersion program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alina?
Good evening. I am so glad to be here tonight advocating for a cause that is so important to me, my classmates, and my family. My name is Alina Gobadi. I'm a junior at Langley High School and I've been studying Japanese since I was in first grade. For the past few years, the Fairfax County Language Immersion Program has been on the verge of elimination and I think this is an action that could be detrimental both to the academics in our county and the communities that have formed as a result of it. The immersion program creates a tight-knit community within each school that results in lifelong friendships amongst the teachers, the children, and the parents. Tonight, I am here with my classmates, who are also my best friends, here to promote the immersion program and all the benefits that it has to offer. Studies show that learning a foreign language in primary school correlates with higher standardized test scores and those who continue that study into high school often show higher academic performance at the college level. I've told you the statistics now, but anybody could do that. I'd like to share with you my story and how I was kind of the success story of the immersion program. It's been 11 years since I began studying Japanese and it all started 30 minutes down the street at Fox Mill Elementary School where I was part of the immersion program. An unexpected turn of events had my dad participating in an archaeological dig in Japan and had me in Japanese public school with my one-year immersion as my only experience. I experienced an intense amount of culture shock, which any second grader would in a foreign country, but having that one year of experience was beneficial to me in ways I can't quite put into words. I felt so isolated, but because of that slight amount of experience that I had had in the program, I was able to break down the language barrier between me and the other students and I became friends with them within the first week. Soon after that, I became fluent and doing homework didn't become so bad and I could easily translate for my parents when they needed the help. Upon returning from Japan, I continued my studies at Fox Mill through middle school and I'm now a junior at Langley High School. At that age, social development is so important and not having a language barrier between the other children and I made it so much easier to feel like a part of that community. Eliminating the immersion program will put high school programs at risk too. As a member of the Japanese National Honor Society, I know how challenging it is to recruit those who are not familiar with the culture. Enrolling these children into the immersion program at a young age gives them exposure and promotes relationships between the two cultures that can grow over the years. It also sits in developing cultural sensitivity, which is not as common as one may think nowadays. It's very important. Japan, among many other nations, is a key player in the world's economy and global politics. Fostering these close ties between these children here, who are also our future leaders, will be nothing but helpful. In two years' time, I'll be heading to college and like most students my age, I'm struggling to figure out how I want to make an impact on the world. And no matter what path I choose, I'm certain that Japanese will remain a crucial part of what I do and will have a profound impact on my life. Languages are important, not just Japanese, not just Spanish, all of them. I hope you will take the benefits of this special program into consideration while you're making your decision. Thank you for listening to my story.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Jabron Hutchins, Shay Dwyer, and Isaac Zaret.
My name is Jabron Hutchins. I'm a fourth grade student at Strings at Mosby Woods Elementary School. Mosby Woods String Program introduced me to music instruction and performance with students at my level, beginners. In fact, I got my first used violin from another student at Mosby Woods, my friend Matthew. I learned my first violin piece, the theme from Star Wars, from a fourth grade strings teacher before I could even read music. In our class, we learn easy pieces, which build my confidence, and more challenging pieces which have to play with others. This teacher just teaches us cooperation and performance. I'm fortunate to take fourth grade strings and also learn private lessons, but other kids in my class may not be so lucky. I think you should cut, I don't think you should cut fourth grade strings in this budget crisis because I am learning an instrument that is critical to early educational development. Studies show that learning a musical instrument improves overall student performance and builds neural pathways in the brain. I practice for 20 minutes most weekends at home. This gives me focus in an activity that is not watching TV or playing video games because I am responsible for getting better as a musician. I'm responsible to my class and to myself. If music classes are one of the first things you put on the chopping block, who says they won't cut fifth or sixth grade strings in a few years? Music is precious and a key part of balanced education. Fairfax County's pride is balanced education and its music programs is one reason why it's among the best systems in the country. Don't put that at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Shay Dwyer is next. Is Shay here? All right, we will come back to Shay. Isaac Zaret, followed by Pyra Robbins and Alexandra Johnson.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, my name is Isaac Zaret. I am a sixth grade student at Great Falls Elementary School and I've been playing violin since fourth grade. Last year, I wrote a letter about why fourth grade strings should not have been cut. Luckily, it was not and my sister and I were able to play in an orchestra together. Sadly, it is again on the list to be cut. Thus, I have come to speak in person this year. I have had many great experiences in fourth grade strings as well as my other strings years. Sometimes, the only thing that has pulled me onto the school bus in the morning is the thought of strings that day. Strings has changed me in ways that are only positive. Fourth grade strings planted the seeds in me for an overall love of music. Inspired by strings, I have started to play piano too, as well as other musical instruments. I have gone from simply hearing music to really listening to it. I have learned to hear the strokes of bows on violins, the strumming of guitars, the blowing of trumpets. I've developed an extraordinary love of music, all starting with fourth grade strings. Strings has taught me many important life skills. My memory has improved by repeating beautiful songs over and over. I've developed hand-eye coordination by sight reading the sheet music, peering at the placement of notes on the staff while placing my fingers on coordinating locations on the strings. I have become much more responsible remembering when to take my violin and music to and from school and needing to practice at home. My relatively shy sister, Ori, now in fourth grade, has become able to play at concerts in front of the whole school thanks to fourth grade strings. Now because of that, she feels brave enough to take part in the school play, something she never would have done before. I hope my brother, Solly, now in second grade, has the same opportunity we had. It has meant so much to me to play in three years of elementary school strings and I really want others to develop skills and have similar experiences by getting to have fourth grade strings. Music has meant so much to me, all because of strings. I hope you choose to preserve the ability for fourth graders to have strings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Pyra Robbins is next. And then will be followed by a group of students that include Alexandra Johnson, Jennifer Newton, and Matt Fannin. So Pyra?
My name is Pyra Robbins.
Sweet.
My name is Pyra Robbins.
Move the microphone down so we can hear you.
My name is Pyra Robbins. I am in second grade at Lake Inn Elementary School in Reston. I am seven years old. I love Spanish immersion because when I travel, I can understand what other people are saying. I also want my brother and sister to learn Spanish too. I have many friends and feel like Lake Inn is my family. Please keep Spanish immersion. Now for our kindergarteners with songs.
Thank you. Are you Alexandra? Alexandra?
I'm Henry Ward.
Go ahead. Go ahead, speak to us sweetheart.
(Singing) Enero uno, enero uno, febrero dos, febrero dos, marzo tres, marzo tres, abril cuatro, abril cuatro, mayo cinco, mayo cinco, junio seis, junio seis, junio siete, junio siete, agosto ocho, agosto ocho, septiembre nueve, septiembre nueve, octubre diez, octubre diez, noviembre once, noviembre once, diciembre doce, diciembre doce. (Cheering) Es la hora, es la hora de hablar en español, cantaremos, cantaremos todo, todo en español, lai 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 lai, español, lai 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 lai, español, cantaremos, cantaremos todo, todo en español. Buenas tardes, cómo estás? Muy bien, gracias, y cómo estás tú? Y cómo estás tú? Cómo están amigos? Cómo están? Muy bien. Cómo están amigos? Cómo están? Muy bien. Cómo están aquí? Cómo están allá? Cómo están amigos? Cómo están? Muy bien.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That was lovely. We appreciate your fine voices. We are now at speaker group number 10 and that is Alexandra Johnson, Jennifer Newton, and Matt Fannin.
I think that's, the group is with number 11. I'm on my own.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
Tell us your name.
Alexandra Johnson.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Please go ahead Alexandra.
Not really sure I'm going to be able to follow up that performance, but I'll try.
You've got a tough act to follow.
I was here last year, in fact, almost on the exact same day, to tell you something very similar to what I will tell you again. Do not cut fourth grade strings. This comes up every year and to be totally frank with you, I'm a little disappointed. I have told you how much strings benefits the children, particularly young ones. I cited a Boston Children's Hospital study last year that explained that the earlier a student starts playing an instrument, the better and more lasting the benefits were. I could tell you again that it improves executive function, the ability to complete challenges, to process and retain information, and adapt to change. I could remind you that it improves SIT scores by almost 30 points. I could explain again the wonderful and giving community that orchestra has given me, one that I most likely wouldn't be a part of if it weren't for fourth grade strings. But I've done all that. I invited you to the Strings Extravaganza, which I organized at Lake Braddock last year and those who are able to make it, I'm sure you saw the extraordinary community and abilities of those who are a small sliver of the FCPS's orchestra program. I got emails from parents explaining how their child loves playing an instrument and as many of my fellow high school students would tell you, their love for playing also began in the fourth grade. When Lake Braddock Orchestra toured the elementary schools in our area to show off the strings program, you can see in the eyes of these students, some as young as five, that they are in awe of what we do at the strings program. And more than that, they want to be a part of it. Can you imagine telling these kids, who have been waiting years to finally play an instrument, that now they have to wait even more? Do you know how many would quit right there? Can you imagine telling my private lesson student, a fourth grade cellist himself, that his little brother won't be able to have the same amazing experience that he has had? Do you realize the number of kids that would be devastated, not just because they aren't able to start strings right away, but because a beloved part of their elementary education has now been taken away? FCPS can afford the fourth grade strings program. Most families, however, cannot afford private lessons from the age that children need to begin, when they are nine to 10 years old. We all know that the strings program is not a viable option to reduce the budget deficit. It's such a small part of the budget and the return is far too great. I've already asked you not to cut fourth grade strings, but today, I'm here to respectfully ask you something slightly different. I would like for you to pass a referendum saying that the fourth grade strings will not be put on a chopping block for budget cuts for the next 10 years. It's simply not worth it.
Just one second first. If the people in the back, if you could please find some seats. I'm hearing that it's against fire regulations if you're standing in the back, so if there are some open seats, if you could please take their seats, we would appreciate that. Thank you so much. And now you are the group of three, which are Jennifer Newton, Matt Fannin, and Kiana Hernandez.
Good evening. I am Matt Fannin and I am a senior at West Potomac High School. Today, we are here to discuss whether size matters. And when it comes to class size, we believe it does. Throughout my time in high school, I have noticed a dramatic increase in class size. When I was a freshman, I had some classes where there were only about 10 students per class. And now as a senior, in all seven of my classes, there are at least 25 students. With fewer people in a class, students connect more with their peers and are more confident and comfortable sharing their ideas. Smaller classes also allow for more chances to speak up in class. In lots of my classes, it is very common to have Socratic seminars, where we are required to speak multiple times. However, with a class of 30 people or so, it makes it very difficult to speak more than once during the conversation. This can really affect a student's grade. A smaller classroom creates an environment of learning that is inviting for students, making them enjoy going to class. From personal experience, I have learned that larger class size has really inhibited my learning. One time this year, I tried to visit with one of my teachers during one of our advisory periods to review for an upcoming test, but was turned away because she had too many other students in the classroom. I think it is very important that the budget reflect the need for smaller class sizes across the board in Fairfax County. Class size can no longer be used as the stopgap in the budget or we will jeopardize the basic fundamental learning environment for our students and teachers. Thank you.
West Potomac has constantly growing class sizes that can affect the intimacy between student and teacher. With smaller class sizes, teachers are able to get to know their students better and can build strong relationships, according to a study done by two Princeton University professors. The Princeton study also noted students who are in schools with smaller class sizes scored higher on achievement tests, even when they are no longer in a small class-sized school model. My experience as a student and SGA president have been that in larger class sizes, students are less engaged. After talking to my teacher, I found that students who are in a small class-sized school model... After talking to my teacher, I found that students who were less engaged were the ones struggling most academically. These large class sizes have the most impact on students academically challenged, and often, a teacher's direct interaction with the student can be the difference between success and failure.
As someone who has grown up in a heavily populated area like Fairfax County, I have seen how class size definitely matters and impacts how a student learns and engages in their class. Having a large class size can cause disadvantages, such as reducing the amount of attention a student receives from their teachers, which I believe is something we should definitely try to hold on to, because the more effort teachers put into to help students individually, the more successful the student will be. Large class sizes also affects the time students collectively engage with each other. I know that firsthand, because in my math and science and government classes, I don't even know a couple of people's names. And when we get projects to work with each other, we just work with the people that we know. Students will probably only talk to people behind, in front, or next to them, but never someone across the room. I am fortunate enough, though, to just have one large class of 39 students, where I know everyone's name and engage with everyone. That's because my teacher has encouraged us to do so and takes the time to plan stuff that we can all do together. But I know most teachers don't do that with their big numbers, especially if it's a core class, because it would take too much time out of their lesson. With the continuous population growth in our county...
Could you please finish up?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
I strongly believe that making class sizes smaller should be a priority, and it's something worth investing in. We have bright students, and they each deserve the time from their teachers in order to be successful in their academics.
Thank you so much for coming out. We appreciate it very much. We are on speaker number 12, and that is Rebecca Rose, followed by speaker number 13, Jordan Meeks, and speaker 14, Grace Kennedy. Rebecca Rose?
Hola, me llamo Rebecca. Yo tengo siete años. Yo soy una estudiante del segundo grado in Fort Hunt Elementary School. I like Spanish immersion because it's very challenging and very interesting. Both of my big brothers are in Spanish immersion, and they really like it, too. I can see how much they have learned, and I want to do that, too. It is good to learn Spanish, so I can communicate with lots of people. I know that someday I will use Spanish in my job. If there is no more immersion, I will feel disappointed and sad and lonely to leave Fort Hunt and go to a new school, where I don't know anyone and there's no Spanish. I feel like it's not fair to take classes away from kids. Kids need to know other languages and not their countries, so that we can understand each other. If people don't understand each other, they can get mad at each other, and maybe even a war can happen. In school, we learn about good choices and bad choices. I hope the grownups will make a good choice to keep our immersion program. Gracias.
Thank you. Jordan Meeks, followed by Grace Kennedy and Charles Gibson.
Hola, mi nombre es Jordan. My name is Jordan Meeks. I am a third grader at Great Falls Elementary School, and I am in the Japanese immersion program. I am fighting to keep this program, because it is a chance for kids like me to learn a new language. It is a chance for me to learn about a different cultures and ideas. It is a chance for me to grow as a student and as a person. I think this program is important, because it helps kids learn more, and learning should be very important to our schools. Please keep this program. It means so much to me and hope that it does not go away. Thank you. Arigato.
Thank you. Grace Kennedy, followed by Charles Gibson and Savannah Day.
Hi, my name is Grace Kennedy. I am an advanced academic placement student. I moved to the AAP Center School in third grade. This may come to a shock to some of you, but I don't have my driver's license. I still have a few more years before I can drive myself to school. I take the bus every day to and from school. Please don't take away the AAP Center School busing. Most families in my class have two working parents, and transportation would not be possible without the school bus. There are many students on my bus who I know would not be able to attend the Center School if the busing was eliminated. I can tell you that programs like Chess Club, Robotics, Odyssey of the Mind, and Science Limbiad are not embraced by the mainstream students at the base schools in the same way. These particular hobbies do not interest the vast majority of mainstream students. When I first came to the Center School, I saw 30 chess boards as soon as I walked into my classroom for the open house in August of my third grade year. My homeroom teacher was a chess club organizer. The kids were excited to play chess. Kids started playing chess on the spot, and you can tell there was interest and excitement. This would not happen at my base school, ever. Kids would get made fun of for playing chess and told it was not cool. It is very important for AAP kids to have a safe, supportive environment where they can explore. If we do not have our busing, most of my classmates would not be able to attend the Center School. I am a patrol captain at my school. I was taught that riding a bus is safer than riding in a car. There is a higher chance of a car getting in an accident than a school bus getting in an accident. I want everyone to know they are safe going to school every day. Please don't take away the AAP Center School busing.
Thank you. Charles Gibson is next, followed by Savannah Day, and then speaker number 17 is Allison Coria Tarazona. Go ahead.
Konnawha, bukino nama wa Charles Gibson desu. Boku sumiru shou ga kono nihongo program ni nen se desu. Good evening. My name is Charles Gibson. I am a second grader in the Japanese immersion program at Fox Mill Elementary School. I like learning Japanese. I think learning a different language is important, so that we can make friends with people from other countries. I also like learning about Japanese food and holidays. We spend half a day learning Japanese. We learn math and science. Learning Japanese is hard, and I really have to try to stay focused. I want to visit Japan when I learn through sixth grade. Thank you for listening, and arigato gozaimashita.
Thank you. Savannah Day is next, followed by Allison Coria Tarazona, and speaker number 18, Sadiksha Guran. Savannah, go ahead.
My dear members of the school board, my name is Savannah Day, and I am a third grader at Crossworld Elementary. Please do not cut fourth grade strings. My friends and I would like to join fourth grade strings next year. I've been looking forward to joining strings for a long time. I watch my brother and sister in their strings classes, and it makes me excited to learn about how amazing strings can be. I have attended lots of concerts, and I am looking forward to being in a strings concert next year. I want to join fourth grade strings, because I want to learn everything I can. When you are in fourth grade, it's a great opportunity to be able to choose an instrument and learn to play. Saturday, I got to experience a great day camp. It's called Strings Palooza. Even though I am in third grade, I was able to be with the beginning class. The teachers were very nice, and the class was very challenging. At first, I didn't think I could do it, but once I got to learn about the instrument and I got to know it better, it got easier to play, and it was a fun day. I even made a new friend. This is why strings are so fun. You get to make friends, you meet friends. You meet people you wouldn't have met if you didn't play an instrument. My question is, why do you keep trying to cut strings? Some people, like my family, own string shops, and fourth grade strings is a lot of their business. My mom and dad work very hard and work very hard to help children learn how to play instruments. We have lots of kids that come in and are very excited to play in fourth grade. A lot of my friends are excited to join strings, and they would be sad if it was cut. There are teachers that wouldn't have jobs if you cut fourth grade strings. Thank you for your time and listening to me, and have a good night.
Thank you. Allison Coria Tarazona?
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth.
I'm Allison.
And I'm Sadiksha.
We are in fifth grade at Belleville Elementary, and we want the one-to-one program to be in our school and many other schools in Fairfax County.
The one-to-one program is a program where schools provide a free laptop or any other device for each student at that school. It is for the student to borrow for the whole year, and if you break the device the first time, you're going to have to pay.
It is proven by Savannah Chatham County Schools that students have better achievement in learning while using the one-to-one program. Furthermore, the Glossary of Education Reform said, "The one-to-one program not only affects students in very good ways, but also teachers." Also, it's better to have a device at hand, rather than holding your thoughts, questions, and comments. That gets students less focused on what they are going to be taught.
Isn't it just better to have a device for general learning? It's also better for note-taking in class. A teacher could pull up Google Classroom or anything on his or her computer and share it with the students on their devices. It is so much easier than calling on kids' raised hands, so why would you do that when you could just be reading students' answers right on your computer? Learning with technology is our present now. Devices have better resources than pencil or paper from a long time ago. We have to take advantage of that and learn while we can.
Not very many schools in Fairfax County have the one-to-one program, which means the kids at our county don't get very fun and modern learning. We should help make a better learning community.
Money Talks. Chromebooks are like laptops, except it's a laptop that is Google Chrome only, which means they will fit students' educational needs. Other higher-grade schools might need more than a Chromebook to fit their needs, but it's good for many lower-grade schools in our county. They are cheaper and better to use instead of a laptop.
If you think about it, the one-to-one program is less expensive than having to buy a bunch of paper. Our school pays over $500 a year on lined paper. If we pay for one laptop for every student in the school, it'll last for years. And once you pay for the device, the school can use some of the money for the cost for more devices, for more kids that come to our school. And remember, these devices are not latest devices. They can be secondhand, too, which makes it less expensive.
What if you don't have money to pay for a device the second time, either? Some families are not able to afford devices at home, which makes it hard to catch up on school, and that's a big problem. Those children don't have to suffer. Those kids have the right to get money from the government that the school gets, and don't have to worry about it. But why pay for the first time? The one-to-one program has a policy that says you have to pay for it if you break it the first time. They shouldn't have to pay for it the first time if you broke it on accident, and that would be the price of the device you broke it from the second time only, not the first time and the second time combined.
We are counting on support to carry the new generation of learning with us and make tons of people happy.
While we know that we might not be able to experience the one-to-one program at our school due to middle school, we are happy that we might be able to bring happiness to other kids.
We really want to thank the following people for helping us throughout this journey. Mr. Smith, you gave us really good tips. We are really thankful for having you as a friend and meeting you.
Ms. Walters, for helping us with our edits and tips to make this happen.
And last but certainly not least, Mr. Close, for introducing the one-to-one program to all of us and leading us with help every step of the way.
We hope we convinced you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ladies. Would you stay there one second, please? If you would repeat your names for us, please.
I'm Elizabeth Nichols.
And I'm Allison Coria Tarazona.
And I'm Sadiksha Guran.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate you. And because I said I was going to be a stickler for rules, they each signed up individually, so that's why we allowed them to have extra time, just so you all know. So, number 20 now. We move from 17 to 20, and we have Carolyn Lemmons and Gabrielle Rivas, followed by Melina Martinez.
Hello, members of the school board and staff. My name is Carolyn Lemmons, and I am a sophomore at Annandale High School. Previously, I attended Glasgow Middle School. Thankfully for me, both schools have offered an international backloriot, or IB curriculum, with certified teachers and staff. The reason I am thankful for the IB and IB MYP programs is that it taught me how to learn, rather than just multiplication tables and proper grammar. The program encourages students to look further than themselves and into the world around them, which is especially important at schools like Glasgow and Annandale, where the population is so diverse. Students learn to look for an explanation instead of just the solution. This allows us to apply the knowledge to both future academic and practical solutions. To illustrate the importance of this program, I will share a story. This year, I applied for a transfer to Marshall High School in order to attend their advanced computing and engineering classes. I was granted the transfer and looked forward to the classes that I then had the opportunity to take. However, upon further research, I discovered that I would not be able to complete the IB Middle Years Program, or IB MYP, that I had started in sixth grade at Glasgow. Because of this, I ultimately decided to stay at Annandale to finish the program. The principles of deeper learning and exploration led me to the conclusion that Annandale would ultimately provide me the better learning environment and eventual education. A large part of my decision came from college admissions counselors, who have said time and time again that IB students are generally better prepared for college. And to that point, I do intend to pursue the IB diploma at Annandale. However, I was rather privileged in growing up. I have two parents who attended college and who can support my academic endeavors. The IB and IB MYP programs are especially important for those whose parents aren't able to support them in the same way mine have. Unlike the AAP program, which is only for Level 4 students, the IB MYP program is for all students at the school. You don't have to apply or test in, giving all students the chance to excel in academics, allowing more students a chance to receive an education that readies them for college and in turn encourage them to grow. Thank you so much for hearing my testimony today, and I encourage you to fully support and fund the IB program in Fairfax County.
Thank you. Gabrielle Rivas, followed by Melina Martinez.
Dear board members, I am here to support parent Liza Zunes. I am a seventh grader at Glasgow Middle School, and I am in science honors class. Last year, in my sixth grade, I had a lot of problems, and Mrs. Donovan has been helping me through the good and bad times. By the end of the year, Ms. Donovan and I had a long conversation. She does her job very well. She has told me that I can either take the hard life right now and in the future, the easy life, or the easy life right now and in the hard life in the future. Another thing she told me, if I don't do well in school, how am I going to do well in a job? Ever since, I have been trying my best, and she has been an inspiration, and I hope she can give more inspiration to other people that really need it. Mrs. Donovan has helped many people, including my oldest sister when she was in Jebstore, and now she is a very successful person in life. She is working at a dentist's office. This is my opinion and Mrs. Donovan. She has been an inspiration to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Melina Martinez? And Melina will be followed by a group of three students, Tori Isadro, Anna Verich, and Aya and Cleo Ryan. I guess four students.
Okay. I am here tonight...
I am here tonight because in my own personal experiences, I've noticed that the connections made between parent liaisons and the people that they help are very strong and genuine. I am currently a senior in West Potomac High School and I'm here to say that the connections made between my own mother and the parent liaison from our, from my own elementary school Bucknell has truly been life-changing and altering. In fact, it was our go-to liaison that informed me about the following program called HCI, which stands for Hispanic College Institute. HCI is a four-day program that is used to educate and motivate Latinx students not to settle for high school diplomas and urges them to seek out higher education after high school. The environment I experienced upon arriving was so warm and welcoming and it's almost unforgettable because the people there genuinely treated you like family. Some of the things they taught us in the span of four days was how to scout colleges and universities to attend, the importance of considering STEM careers, and most importantly, to truly believe that no matter what struggles or hardships you have been faced in life, you can accomplish everything and anything you set your mind to. I can positively say that throughout this program, I've been able to make memories and connections that will last a lifetime. This program most definitely changed me, most definitely challenged me to go and consider pursuing, studying after high school because I was in a point in my life where I didn't know whether to continue on or not. And the fact that I would not have known about this program without my mother's connections to a parent liaison shows just how much of an impact they truly have on the community. Other things that they have helped me and my family specifically with is they've offered my mother English classes, which was something she very much needed at the time and she has perfected now. And it's something she herself admires and always appreciates. And they also helped my sister with her transcripts into transferring to Stratford Landing for their AAP programs. And Ms. Marcia St. Clanning is the one who has been there for my family through everything and we are eternally grateful and we don't know how we would ever make it up to her. And so I'm here to say that parent liaison programs definitely work and they definitely have an impact on their community and I know I cannot be thankful enough for everything they've done for me and my family and the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm in third grade JI immersion at Fox Mill, same as my friend Aya. I like immersion because you can learn the culture and language that is very unique. You also get to learn how they're educated too. I also like that when we learn math and science in Japanese, sometimes we even celebrate the holidays that Japanese people celebrate too. Kind of like last week when we celebrated Japanese New Year and I got to eat mochi. I hope that future Japanese immersion students will have so much fun in JI or a different immersion program like I did. Please save immersion. Thank you.
My name is Aya Ryan and I'm nine in third grade JI. JI is a Japanese immersion program at Fox Mill Elementary. This program is important to me because my grandma and my dad are Japanese and it's important because since I've been learning Japanese in school, I'm able to talk and write to my grandma in Japanese. Also, because I think learning math and science in Japanese is fun, unique, and challenging. I think it's pretty awesome that when my teachers speak and write to me in Japanese, I can almost understand them completely. I like learning Japanese, but I also really enjoy all the cultural activities we do. I feel like I appreciate Japanese culture and lifestyle. Finally, I'm really glad that I've met so many different friends, so many different kinds of friends. Some are Japanese and some are not, but we all work together and love learning Japanese. So please keep all immersion programs so that I can keep learning Japanese and so my little sister Cleo, who is six and is in kindergarten at Fox Mill, has the same opportunity to learn Japanese like I do. Thank you.
Hello, hi, my name is Cleo Ryan and I'm six years old. I am in kindergarten at Fox Mill and I would like you to keep the Japanese immersion program because I would like, I would love to have a chance to learn Japanese just like my sister Aya. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Has Shay Dwyer gotten here?
Chief Marv is there.
Okay, all right. We will, and Melina Ayer. Go ahead, tell me your name.
Okay.
Tell me, tell us your name first.
Anna Verich.
Okay, all right, Anna, thank you. We had you with the other group, but thank you. Please go ahead.
Hola, mi llamo Anna Verich. Tengo diez años y estoy en quinto grado en la escuela de Fort Hunt. I'm in the Spanish immersion program. I would like to keep it because learning Spanish is one of my passions. I find learning Spanish interesting. I love the idea that you can learn different languages in Fairfax County. It is something that makes me proud to be a student here at Fort Hunt. Spanish adds more of a challenge to my schoolwork. Not only am I learning math and science, but I'm also learning a foreign language as well. I thought about joining the Navy and becoming a doctor where I can use my Spanish to help others while I am traveling. Six years ago, my family moved here just to participate in the Spanish immersion program. I have an older sister and brother who also are in the Spanish immersion program and enjoy the program as much as I do. As a result of the immersion program, both of my siblings are taking high school Spanish classes while they are only in middle school. If the immersion program was cut, half of my friends would have to leave their, have to leave and go to their neighborhood schools. It would be so sad for me. In fact, I think it would be cruel to lose something that make, too cruel to tear a school apart. And Fairfax County Public Schools would lose something that makes it special and unique. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. So Ms. Melina Ayer, who, that concludes our student speakers this evening. Ms. Melina Ayer, who, you gave up your slot earlier if you're here, if you want to come back. So we'll have you next. And you, and after that, we will continue with Armando Perry, John Banbury, and Marcia St. John Cunnings.
Dear members of school board, members at large, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to present my points regarding the proposed budget. This is my first time addressing this forum. I'm a parent of two school-age children for Fairfax County, sixth grader at Lewis Archer and second grader in VN Elementary. We moved from Southern Maryland to Fairfax County specifically for differentiated education for our older son who was in first grade at that time. The county we moved from did not provide differentiated education in any form. Top-performing 10% students were offered a few additional worksheets. We felt our child was neither being a challenge nor had the opportunity to work with peers who have similar interests. Since starting at Lewis Archer, he has thrived with the help of AAP curriculum and excellent teachers. He has been an active participant for science Olympiad team as a fifth and sixth grader, has participated in Geography B, is participating in Science Bowl team currently. These avenues would not have been available to him without an AAP center-based curriculum. Based on my personal experiences, I request the board to consider not eliminating AAP center schools. Many gifted students thrive in the AAP centers, but not in local level for classes with the same curriculum, possibly due to lack of like-minded peers to challenge them and nurture their interests. Moreover, co-curricular and enrichment activities such as Science Olympiad, Science Bowl, Geography B requires a broader base of center community which can challenge them. Even merely eliminating the transportation to AAP centers will disproportionately target not only the minority students and less privileged, but will also reduce the core number of students required in a broad-based, center-based curriculum to help the students go forward. Increasing the class sizes in AAP has been discussed last year, again, it's coming up this year. Our classes are already large and overcrowded. This hurts not only the students and their education, but also it's undue strain on teachers. This hurts our ability to attract and retain quality teachers. My sixth grader in Lewis Archer attends a disproportionately large class with 26 students compared to 19 students in the base AAP, base classes. This, this is definitely concerning as a parent, who I have to see what my child has to go through on a regular basis. Just please make an effort to kind of consider these before we consider any country AP or Level 4 services. Cutting these programs would not only weaken our schools in terms of quality and competitiveness with other school districts, but also prevent families like mine from considering Fairfax County as a viable option for our child's educational needs. Please consider this plea as you make these decisions for the budget in upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Armando Perry, followed by John Banbury and Marcia St. John Cunnings.
Just to save you some time, we have the three, Mr. Yarborough has a time later on, so instead of nine minutes, we'll compress down to six if you want those three minutes back. If not, we can speak in Spanish for you.
Do more with less, I like it.
Go ahead, we'll give you six minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Armando Perry, or I should say, mi nombre es Armando Perry. I am the president of the Fairfax Association of Elementary School Principals and I'm proud to stand here with Terrence Yarborough, the president of the Middle School Principals Association, and with John Banbury, the president of the High School Principals Association. We represent over 300 school-based administrators and we are all united in support of the budget proposed by Superintendent Lockard. We are also united in our belief that employee compensation must be our top priority. As you know, we, the principals of Fairfax County, have had to manage our schools despite record vacancies over the last two years. These vacancies are in great part due to losing qualified staff to higher wages in neighboring districts and the challenge of attracting the best new teachers in a shrinking pool of candidates. My experience at Pine Spring Elementary School is not an uncommon one. At the end of last school year, three dynamic teachers, two primary and one advanced academics, were sad to leave our school. They went to a neighboring district to our east for significant pay raises. These teachers had two, five, and 10 years of experience respectively. Think of the talent and the investment in professional development that we as a division lost. I was able to fill two of those vacancies, one with a first-year teacher, and another by promoting a teacher from within FCPS, a shift in that vacancy. The third remained vacant throughout the summer and into the first quarter despite our searching for qualified candidates. Resumes were few and far between, not like years past, when we had 20 to 30 candidates or resumes per vacancy. Finally, I had to trade the position for two instructional assistant positions to try to support crowded classrooms.
Dr. Lockard's proposed budget represents our most basic needs with an emphasis on hiring and retaining the best employees to serve our students and families. The best means we have to ensure student success by having a highly effective teacher in every classroom. In order to ensure we recruit, retain the best teachers, employees possible to support our students, we support the continued investment in teacher salaries that was begun last year as well as salary increases for all FCPS employees. We are asking that you continue down the path you started last year to make teacher salaries competitive with our neighboring districts. We would ask that you support and find a way to fully fund Dr. Lockard's budget proposal, including the adjustments for employee salaries. Support proposed funding is of $44 million for an average step increase of 2.5% for all eligible employees. Support the proposed four-year implementation plan to bring teacher salaries to market average. And support funding of $14.9 million to implement new non-teacher salary scales, including an average of 1% market-scale adjustment.
So we've heard from about two dozen students. Brilliant speakers, I might ask. All of you guys are great. And potentially, you guys are going to have to make some tough special interest cuts. But as you can tell from our theme, we're here to back our teachers. What wasn't mentioned from all of our student speakers was that what they really need is top-quality teachers. We know, we no longer have a huge pool of candidates. It's getting harder and harder. I've been a hiring manager for nearly 20 years now. It used to be literally dozens per position. Every single one of my colleagues at high school believe that this is our number-one priority. And every single one of them could give you an example of how their school suffered because a veteran teacher left to another county or left to another state where the cost of living was better for them. I'm gonna give you a very small example from Oakton High School just this year. I have seven teachers in my math department who are teaching extended contracts because there was not another math teacher to be hired. When we look at the high schools and the complexities of the sciences, the maths, the languages, and for that matter, ESOL, the pool is getting so small that we're opening school without teachers or begging our current staff to be on extended contracts, which quite frankly just burns them out and will probably have them leave the profession earlier. So in closing, the one thing the High School Association, Middle School Association, and Elementary School Association is asking you to do is to continue this trend on teacher compensation. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Marcia St. John Cunnings, followed by Kevin Hickerson. And next, our next speaker then will be Carla Okuchi.
Okay, that's a hard act to follow as well. Good evening, school board members, some of you who know me. Welcome to the new school board members. Before I start my, my speech, I want to say thank you to those parent liaisons that manned the table outside and directed all the parents that were coming in and all the community here to where to go. If you were directed by a parent liaison, please clap. And that's a perfect example of what we do every day. We jump into the fray. There was no one at the table. We started directing people. We started advocating. We started explaining. Three minutes. How can I sum up to you the type of work parent liaisons do and the impact it has in that amount of time? It is impossible. Our position is the only one in the county that focuses on building relationships with all FCPS stakeholders in an effort to encourage student success and family engagement. We advocate, we empower, and we explain. We are the trust builders in Fairfax County, a job I have been passionate about for 17 years. As parent liaisons, we work for all students and all families. However, the truth is much of our work is with most of the disenfranchised and vulnerable population in our community, a population that continues to grow in Fairfax County. It has often been said that parent liaisons are the heart of the schools. And as this loose acronym explains, helping to engage, empower, and encourage families and students to have access and the ability to adapt in order to achieve academically by building respectful, reliable relationships through thoughtful, trustworthy, and transformative teamwork. That's the acronym of HEART. Like the HEART, we reach out through a variety of arteries in our schools and communities to help engage and empower parents and students to be able to access all the programs that FCPS offers so they can be successful. We work with principals, classroom teachers, ESOL teachers, special education teachers, counselors, social workers, psychologists, language services, office personnel, and community organizations, and yes, the school board and the board of supervisors. We help with the most fundamental needs a student can have and go on to create and run programs that benefit them and everything else in between. I am here today to once again advocate that the parent liaison position become a contracted position. This has been taken into consideration more than once by the board. In the interest of time, I am submitting the Human Relations Advisory Committee report, which advocated for this to be a full-time position. You can read the rest of my speech. The one thing I want to tell you is this. Probably the best student ever was Helen Keller, but she said that the worst thing than not being able to see is to not have vision. I'd like to paraphrase that and say that the worst thing than being mute is to be able to speak and not to speak out. We are here today to speak up, not only to advocate for us, but more importantly, to advocate for the communities that we serve, those that are the highest at risk. I am asking you to have vision and I am asking you to be our voice.
Hello, Mrs. Kofax.
Hello.
Superintendent Lockard, fellow school board members. My name is Kevin Hickerson, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Fairfax Education Association. In the first five months as president of this great union, I have made almost 40 worksite visits. This has included schools, instructional centers, transportation centers, and administration buildings. I am doing this not because I want to spend more time idling in traffic on 66 or the Beltway, but because I want to get to know our employees, both inside and outside of the Fairfax Education Association, who are the backbone of our one-of-a-kind school system. I have heard from our members about the crushing workload and the increasing class sizes. I have spent time talking to members who have to worry about choosing whether they can visit the doctor at the end of the month because they can't afford the co-pay. I have talked to others who say they cannot afford to live in Fairfax County, or cannot afford to have a child, or if they do have a child, cannot help them financially with college. The stories go on and on. We are at a crossroads when it comes to our public school system in Fairfax County. We are expanding our enrollment while we are talking about class size increases. We are talking about stalling and lowering salary adjustments as we currently face 106 open instructional vacancies in mostly ELL and special education courses. Working in education may be a calling, a job of service, but it is also a career, and it is a career that is no longer very attractive as advertised salary scales turn out to be a work of fiction, promised retirements are under attack, workload increases with no end in sight, and even the FCPS Shining School District on a hill must now face the national reality of educator shortages. Our county is also in desperate need of bus drivers to get our children safely to and from school. We have food service workers who need to be paid what they're worth as they work in hot, fast-paced conditions. We have custodians who manage to keep our schools clean and well-maintained while trying to eke out a living. Last year, our support professionals were told to wait a year, and their salaries would be adjusted to a more appropriate market rate. As I stand here today, discussion about the upward adjustments to support professional salaries scales have vanished. The stories go on and on. Last year was a year of hope for our county. We stood together as a community, school board, educators, parents, to demand our school system and our children's futures be the forefront of how our county spends its resources. We worked as one to show the board of supervisors that our school system with the students and employee within is the backbone of a county that can be high-functioning and meet the needs of a diverse population. We need to do the same thing this year. Thank you.
Carla Okuchi, followed by Crystal Tanks, and then Dave Swan.
Gung-hai fah-choi. Happy Lunar New Year. My name is Carla Okuchi, vice president of the Fairfax Education Association and music educator at Mosby Woods Elementary School. I stand before you as a product of Fairfax County Public Schools, a parent with one child at Fairview Elementary School and the other attending La Patite next door. Our world-class school system needs more than just a booster shot during this budget season. The education professionals are tired of FCPS balancing the budget upon our backs with increased workloads, decreased time to do the most important parts of our job, and a lack of autonomy. In preparing this speech, I referred back to one I gave three years ago, and little regarding workload issues have changed. Workload. We continue to arrive early and stay late to prepare lessons, grade student work, follow-up on email, build SMARTboard lessons, maintain Blackboard's conference with and contact parents, and try to tackle the overwhelming stacks of paperwork. Custodial staff clean our schools packed with even more students. Office staff keep up with ever more paperwork and record-keeping requirements. With no more hours in the day, a constantly increasing required work, staff is routinely staying after contract hours to fulfill our responsibilities to our students. While the school board approved regulation-based changes to planning time in the last two years, many of those changes have not been implemented at the worksite levels, so our challenges remain. Employees should not have to rely on grievance processes to have the ability to do our jobs. Class size, it does matter. Research has indicated that children in smaller class sizes achieve better outcomes at all grade levels. Experts agree that money saved today by increasing class sizes will result in more substantial social and educational costs in the future. This impacts our working conditions and influences teacher recruitment and retention. Even our most advanced students working with our most competent educators will not thrive when we stuff them too many into our classrooms. Where are we going to put all these kids? The standards-based report card still takes up a large portion of time to complete, in particular for specialists who have five to six grades per child, like myself, teaching over 450 students with five grades each. That means I have to complete next week 2,250 grades per quarter. Do we really need this many grades in music, art, and PE at the elementary level? The time spent on grading and paperwork takes away from the time we need to plan and prepare our lessons. I'm a dreamer and an optimist who thinks that our students deserve the best. We need things like universal childcare and pre-K offered throughout this county. Our students need a school system where the arts remain the crown jewel of creativity, and we create global learners through our foreign language programs, where we treat our staff and students with respect and give them the autonomy to thrive. We deserve the best. We can be the best. We are FCPS.
Crystal Tanks, followed by Dave Swan, and then Sarah Hobson.
Good evening, Mr. Lockard, our school board. I bring you greetings from FEA, Fairfax Education Association. My name is Crystal Tanks, and I'm on the Board of Directors for FEA and also the committee chair of the ESP Council, which includes our education support professionals. I'm speaking on behalf of all employees of the Fairfax County Public Schools. Although my main focus is our education support professionals, I truly believe all employees are not earning their fair share of a living wage. This is by far on the list of being one of the richest counties in the nation, but pay their employees the lowest salaries. We need to think about improving the salaries of the best employees to keep them from going to other jurisdictions. We also offer some of the best trainings only to send our educated employees to our surrounding counties and make better salaries. I'm asking this board to think about the employees that have invested their time and knowledge throughout this county to be compensated for a job well done. With this investment, we graduate some of the best students as they are prepared for the world ahead of them. Again, I ask this board to consider the cuts and fund salaries needed to retain your investment, our students' world's precious cargo. Thank you.
Dave Swan, followed by Sarah Hobson, and then Kristy Donovan.
Good evening. I am Dave Swan, chairman of the Support Services Employee Advisory Councils, representing 9,000 of some of the finest professionals of any school district. Southwest Airlines is consistently ranked number one in customer service. They're proud to say that the reason is they put the customer second. They see that by putting the employee first with their actions, respect, pay, employees take such pride in their jobs that they will put customers first in all that they do. Our goal at FCPS is similar, to put the success of every child above all else. Another difficult budget, and the challenge comes again: How best to do more with less? We propose that the way is to model the Southwest philosophy and achieve remarkable results. Will we ask FCPS employees to endure another year with no step increase, cost of living adjustment, while surrounding jurisdictions keep pace? Will we shelve the compensation and engagement surveys and say it's just too tough to handle that this year? Will we choose to support one employee group over another? We hope not. The studies clearly show that many employee groups have fallen behind the pay in our neighboring jurisdictions. This should be no surprise, as we have issued no step increases in four of the last eight years, while other jurisdictions have followed through. An outstanding employee considering FCPS over other employees has to weigh not just the pay listed on their scale, but also the likelihood that we will issue that step program in subsequent years. Cutting communications, development, and award programs and other support, year after year, has produced less-than-satisfactory results. We must once again become the reliable employer that attracting the finest talent requires. Your support employees provide the shoulders that our educators stand on to reach the heights of student success. We volunteer our time and effort on countless task force suggesting solutions to some of the most difficult tasks, including balancing available funds with needed pay, benefits, facilities management, and all of student achievement. We stand ready to work with this board to expand this effort. If we want to get greater results from less-than-needed funds, then let's protect the pay of all our employees, reliably issue step increases, and provide the tools necessary for all to feel respected. This is the best way for us to reach our goal of maximizing the success of every child under our care. I want to thank you for your support and your service.
Thank you. Sarah Hobson, followed by Kristy Donovan, and then Patricia Zamorano.
It's wrong. My name is Marcia Donovan.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good evening.
Well, we had Sarah Hobson.
Sarah Hobson.
Sarah Hobson.
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Hobson, and I live in Patheims District, but my younger daughter goes to Herndon Elementary, which is in the Drainsville District. I'm a supporter of flags, so I have two daughters. Erica is a seventh grader at Langston Hughes, taking French 1B, which is an eighth-grade course, and Rebecca is a fourth-grade student in the French immersion program. Firstly, I want to thank you all for a wonderful opportunity you have given my girls. Erica is fluent in her French comprehension and is able to converse in French when we have gone to France. They are both in the advanced math, so Erica was taking seventh-grade math in French while in sixth grade. The French immersion program has been at Herndon Elementary for 20-plus years. The opportunity is really wonderful. Learning a language in the natural way, rather than being taught grammar, et cetera, is a great mind-opener, and to truly master an accent, you need to have heard the language and begun to use it before the age of eight. Otherwise, certain sounds will never be achieved. Our family has made the commitment to the language immersion program for nine years, six years for each child. This means we need to drive our children to school each day and pick them up, with seven years into this commitment, and feel very disappointed that the program has been proposed for elimination. If the program would be cut, it is my understanding my younger daughter would be forced to return to her base school, lose all her friends, and repeat a year of math, as there's no accelerated math at her base school. And apart from the loss of French instruction, this would be very disruptive. The immersion program and other wonderful programs that Fairfax County provides, such as music, IB, athletics programs, has kept us living in Fairfax County and even in the U.S. It'd be difficult to find schools in the U.K. that could compare to the experience my children get here. So the list of cuts that affect us this year, obviously the language immersion program, but also late bus service for middle schools, we really rely on that bus service for her to do it, and even if we were able to pick our child up, not enough children would stay after school to get those after-school programs. Class sizes for middle schools are due to be increased. The middle school IB program is proposed for elimination, which we love, and class sizes for elementary schools. And then the list of cuts that would affect us the next year, again, late bus school service for high schools, class sizes for high schools, the IB program, reducing the positions. Student athletics, I can't believe you're proposing to eliminate ninth-grade student athletics. Please, if you do consider cutting these programs, which I really hope you don't have to, please consider how easy it would be to reinstate. Some of them, such as the immersion programs, probably could be almost impossible to reinstate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Dr. Lockard. I'm not going to talk about parent liaisons, because Marcia writes talk a lot and explains, but I'm going to explain to something I'm very concerned about. I am Marcia Donovan. I have been served the same community as a parent liaison, working for 19 years, 17 years in Stewart High School and two years in Glasgow Middle School. Most of those years, I worked 39, 75 hours per week, doing full-time position as hourly employee, in temporary position and no benefits. Parent liaison supports the families and students not only to graduate, but to go to college, to become technicians, with skills to be successful in their lives. Parent liaisons work to fulfill Fairfax County Public Schools' mission to increase student achievement and their success. To do this, we need to have experienced liaisons, but every year, we lose very qualified parent liaisons. After learning how the school works, what families and the students need to have success, to develop network with outside organizations, we lose the investments when the parent liaison leaves to better position outside FCPS, to other organizations that do give them benefits. Then, we have to hide new, inexperienced liaison who have to learn everything from the beginning. This is a result of the benefits not being provided to the liaisons. It's a large issue for Fairfax Public Schools. In the beginning of 2011, FCPS had 107 parent liaisons, of which 125 were new that year. By giving benefits to parent liaison employees, FCPS will retain liaisons much longer and reduce the turnout rates. The school system will reap the benefits of their ongoing and growing experiences, providing better service to the school system, the students, and the families. It is additional cost to the system, but the return of the investments yields much better service. Please, give the school, parents, and students the support they deserve by giving benefits to parent liaisons and ties them to stay in FCPS for a long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patricia Zamorano, followed by Wally Bloomfield, and then Karen Miller.
Hi. I'm her daughter. I'm going to translate for her. My name is Patricia Zamorano, and I am the daughter of two beautiful girls, Maria and Alejandra, and Natalie. I am here to support the parent liaisons, and here is why. Maria graduated from Jobsthor High School in 2015, and that's where we met Ms. Marcia Donovan in approximately 2011. She is the parent liaison where the entire high school stage, she was important support for Maria. She was always there, helping her to keep her grades up and then to develop throughout her school year in high school. She was also supporting her by making the high school transition easier. We have always received unconditional support from Ms. Donovan, and when Maria graduated from Jobsthor High School, she received scholarships that without the help of those, it wouldn't have been possible for her to attend George Mason University. After Maria finished high school, we stopped seeing her, but then we met her again at Glasgow Middle School, and I gained huge satisfaction from meeting her again. When my daughters and I faced difficult moments recently by being a victim of domestic violence, we had no money, but with the help of Ms. Marcia Donovan... we had no money, but with the help of Ms. Marcia Donovan, we were able to get different support, food-wise and psychological support also for Natalie, the 12-year-old, and also by helping her get a computer from the school so that she could do her schoolwork when, because we didn't have one. Ms. Donovan is a very reliable person, and she is always there to serve not only me but also the other families of Glasgow Middle School that need help. Yeah. Thank you.
Wally Bloomfield followed by Karen Miller and Maria Demarest.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for your time. I'm Wally Bloomfield, and I'm here representing the Bus Drivers and Attendants Advisory Council, which in turn represents nearly 1,800 authorized employees. On any given school day, we transport 110,000 students to and from school. In addition, we provide the transportation for athletic and cultural events held throughout every week of the school year. There are 1,295 authorized driver positions. 1,183 are required to fulfill the daily needs of the schools. The difference in those two numbers represents the pool of drivers who would take up the slack of planned and unplanned absences. But we do not have 1,295 drivers, and we do not have 1,183 drivers. As of two weeks ago, we had 1,111 drivers, 72 short of what we need to fulfill the daily needs of the schools. On any given day, there are an average of 90 absences, planned and unplanned. That leaves us with 162 drivers short of where we need to be daily. What does that mean? Assume that the average bus driver has three school runs in the morning and three in the afternoon. That's two elementary schools and either a middle school or a high school. If we are short 162 drivers, that's 486 school runs uncovered in the morning and again in the afternoon. On average, based upon the overall ridership and the number of required driver, each driver transports 93 students in the morning and again in the afternoon. Some drivers more, some less. If we're short 162 drivers daily, that's over 15,000 students who do not have their regular ride to school every day. But they all get there. How? There are bus driver floaters who are available throughout the county to transport students to any given school. Supervisors drive routes, both for their own schools and neighboring schools on a regular basis. Drivers double up on runs, do two runs for the same school. This means one of those runs will be late to school in the morning or late getting home in the afternoon. Dispatchers call for any available driver to go to A and B streets to get students for XYZ Elementary. The students get there. The drivers get the job done. We only have 94% of the drivers needed, and in any given day, only 86% available, but we do 100% of the work. There was no step increase in fiscal years 2010, 11, 13, and 14, nor was there a cost of living in fiscal years 10, 11, and 15. On paper and in the budget, the planned salary increase is labeled as a step increase based upon longevity and a market scale adjustment. That is, in fact, what it is, but to the drivers and attendants, it also represents something else. To us, it's a merit increase in recognition of what we've done and continue to do on a daily basis. Please do not forget us in your budget deliberations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I'm going to call next 30 speakers' names, starting with speaker number 35. I'm going to call three names at a time, but for those of you who arrived after 6 o'clock, let me give you some of the instructions that were given at the beginning of public hearing. If you have not already done so, please provide your written comments to one of our clocks sitting in the front row up there, and please turn off your cell phone. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and to be respectful of everyone, we ask that you stay within their time limit. As I said, three names will be called at a time. When your names are called, please move to the front of the auditorium. There are two front seats right over there. If you could sit over there at the front seat, that will be appreciated. There will be an opportunity for individuals to speak if there are no show speaker slots remaining at the end of the hearing. After all the registered speakers have addressed the board, Mr. Anna Korfax will announce whether there are any no-show slots available. As a matter of fact, I know that there is at least one slot available as of this point. Throughout the evening, you may notice that some board members leave the table at times, but they will have access to a TV in the back and will be able to listen to and watch a older speaker's testimonies. With that, I am going to start with, again, number 35, Karen Miller, to be followed by Maria Demarest and John George.
Good evening. My name is Maria Demarest, member of the school board, Sandy Evans, chairman, Mr. Lockhart, inter-institutively superintendent. My name is Maria Demarest, and I have been a parent liaison at Bayless Elementary School for the art and science since 1991. During these 25 years, I have seen some changes and improvement made to parent liaison position, but I have also seen many parent liaisons leave for better paying job with benefit. Unfortunately, not enough progress has been made in changing the status of parent liaison to the well-established position in the school system with full benefits. The importance of parent involving in promoting a school's success cannot be overstated. It is the primary role of a parent liaison to empower parents to become apted participants in the education of their children. In 1991, they were a handful of parent liaison. Today, we are about 154. We all recognize that if our school are to do an effective job of educating the increasingly diverse population of students, we need parent liaison to help reach hard to reach parents. 10 years ago, I had to split my job responsibilities between that office, parent liaison, and office assistant in order to obtain health insurance. After 25 years as a parent liaison, it is hard to retire without retirement benefits and live on only a social security check. I asked the school board to help us and the new generation of parent liaison to obtain full retirement and health benefits with step increase salaries and to change us to a contracting position, which take longevity into account. I ask this because it takes a village to raise a child, and parent liaison are critical players in the parents, family, education, and community partnership. We need to establish their importance and security of this job. Thank you.
Next speaker is John George to be followed by Vanessa Roten and Tony Shivers.
Good evening. My name is John George. I'm a school bus driver floater, an occupation so far removed from my former job that I never even considered it until my prospects suddenly evaporated in my chosen field. More than 13 years later, I'm still staring a 16-ton yellow box into unlikely places and gladly receiving navigational aid from kindergartners. For me, it's more than a job, and that's why I've chosen to speak tonight. The truth is, our county's more than 1,200 bus drivers, 400 attendants, and transportation The importance of what we do far exceeds our job titles. Every weekday, we safely transport more than 100,000 students on time from their neighborhoods to their schools and back again. Side by side with our students, we are carrying their hopes and dreams. Here's a sampler of what bus drivers, attendants, and supervisors do. We're early risers. Some of us arrive at our buses at 5:30 a.m. or before, where we examine our buses top to bottom, inside and out, looking at 200 different elements to guarantee roadworthiness and safety. All buses that fail the pre-trip inspection are removed from service until they're repaired. Our workdays are linked to the schedules of the 196 schools that we serve. A single driver may deliver students to four different schools on a typical morning, carrying as many as 78 at one time and covering more than 100 miles in a day. Our job is always to arrive on time, although this objective is sometimes hijacked by rain, snow, traffic jams, and breakdowns. We adopt and persevere by driving the conditions, finding alternate routes, and if need be, switching from one bus to another. We do more than just drive safely. Drivers and attendants clean up their buses, comfort students in distress, mediate disputes, inject lifesaving medicine, train safety patrols, keep records, and protect our students. We stay alert to the present to safeguard the future of our students. Camaraderie of bus drivers is little known outside our close-knit group. We are connected by our shared experiences. Drivers at work always wave to other drivers, even if we don't know each other. When one of our drivers calls for help, the two-way radio crackles and is overwhelmed with volunteers. That's just what we do. I suspect this type of mutual aid applies to all FCPS employees for the benefit of our students. School board members, your job's not easy. This year, there are more stakeholders, greater demands, and less money. Please carefully consider the proposal of raises for all employees. Remember that every day, we help safeguard our students' future. Please do the same for us.
Vanessa Roten to be followed by Tony Shivers and Alton Purvis.
Good evening, Madam Chairman Evans, members of the school board, and intern superintendent Dr. Lockhart. I am Vanessa Roten. I'm a proud Fairfax County School.
You want to lower the microphone?
Yeah, that might work. That's sorry. I am a proud Fairfax County Public Schools bus driver, and I'm speaking on behalf of all of Fairfax County Public School bus drivers and attendants. Thank you for hearing us last year. We appreciate that you recognized our value. Once again, we are optimistic for a fully funded budget without cuts. I would like to ask you to fully support the FY 2017-18 budget proposed by intern Dr. Lockhart, giving all employees a step increase of 2.5% if they are eligible. With regards to our pay scale, we lag behind our neighboring counties. Drivers and attendants who have reached the top of the pay scale receive no further step increases. Bus drivers and attendants who, in addition to losing three days due to the restructure, still have fewer hours and there is no momentum forward realized due to the increase in the cost related to insurance benefits. It is all but impossible for new drivers to make a career and take care of their families over the long haul with Fairfax County Public Schools. The open demand of our time to accommodate the nature of our job requirements, coupled with the amount of unpaid worked hours built into our new schedules, makes it an unworkable opportunity for the majority in the current economy. Attendant to the training and the skills of our drivers remains an implement to the continuing and the ability for Fairfax County Public Schools to have an experienced workforce. When is it our time to be considered? How do we compensate and retain our skilled, responsible, and professional drivers and attendants who gladly take on the tremendous responsibility to safely transport our most precious cargo, our children, every school day? By giving us all the same paid holidays and teacher workdays, putting us all on the prior pay scale, and eliminating the new pay scale, therefore making us all equals. No cutbacks by not cutting anything from us. We have already had too much taken from us. Even one fewer day of late runs would greatly affect our pay and our livelihood. We love being a part of Fairfax County Public Schools' family. We take pride in being the mechanicism by which it is operated. As stated on the FCPS webpage, one of the largest private bus fleets in the United States, we make it go. We make the system work. By transporting our students safely and on time, we enable our 21st century learners to make a portrait of a graduate a reality. We get our students to school and see them home each day. Please continue to show support that we value our part.
Could you wrap up just a minute?
Yes, sir. Yes. Our part contribute to the whole. We are the link in the strongest chain. Please fully fund our drivers and attendants as you make the decisions to implement the 2017-18 school budget year. You run because we run. Thank you.
Tony Shivers to be followed by Alton Purvis and Timothy Leappam.
Good evening, Chairwoman Evans, Vice Chairwoman Strauss, to my board member Pat Heinz, and members of the Fairfax County School Board. My name is Tony Shivers, and I am a superintendent liaison for the Armstrong Elementary School PTA located in Reston. I'm testifying on behalf of the Armstrong Elementary School PTA, a passionate group of parents and teachers dedicated to ensuring that Armstrong School is an effective school that provides high-quality education to its students and that they are prepared for success beyond high school. I have a third grader and a first grader at Armstrong, and my wife is also a nationally board-certified teacher at the school and has been teaching at the county for over 20 years. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening. Currently, Armstrong has about 460 students and is a comprehensive services site with about 20% of the student population with special needs, including enhanced autism. The Armstrong PTAs are proud of family of students, families, teachers, leaders, and school support staff. We are one big family that effectively works together with the belief that all Armstrong students can achieve academically and socially at exceedingly high levels and would be productive, caring citizens in our community. Over the years, Armstrong PTA has developed a strong network of community and business partnerships to provide many academic opportunities for its students, including Odyssey of the Mind Program that helps develop critical problem-solving skills, as well as the Junior Lego League. Armstrong is proud of the fact that its school has a committed staff who are widely engaged in curricula and planning to support all programs within the school, including upper grade teachers that earn their advanced academic certification so that they can be the most effective teachers in the classroom. Yet unlike Armstrong School, it is not unlike many Fairfax County Public Schools that Yet unlike Armstrong School, it is not unlike many Fairfax County Public Schools that have concerns over class sizes and being able to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers. The other major concern is that we do not have adequate medical or mental health staff to support the many needs of Armstrong students and families. As the board already knows, students who receive social, emotional, support, and prevention services achieve better academically in school. With that said, Armstrong supports the FY 2018 budget proposal as submitted by the Fairfax County Public Schools, as it maintains the priorities to ensure that our world-class system can recruit and retain highly effective teachers and provide high-quality resources in the classroom. Moreover, on behalf of Armstrong, I'd like to sincerely express our gratitude to the Fairfax County School Board for its diligent efforts to ensure that our public schools continue to be the best school system in the nation, especially its efforts to try to pass the Mills Tax Referendum that should have been overwhelmingly passed by county residents. Armstrong PTA understands that the Fairfax County School Board and the County Board of Supervisors does thankless work and makes tough budgetary decisions that comes with a lot of criticism during the budgetary process each fiscal year. However, your work does not go unnoticed from the Armstrong PTA. We thank each board member for his, his and her commitment, passion, and leadership to our great school system in our county. Armstrong is also committed to working with the Fairfax County School Board, the County Board of Supervisors, and the Virginia General Assembly to do what's best for Fairfax County teachers, students, and leaders. Thank you for your time.
Arthur Purvis to be followed by Timothy Lepham and Eric Wolf Welch.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Lockard, members of the board, my name is Arthur Purvis. I address you as President of the Fairfax County Taxpayers Alliance. For FY 2018, the school system is asking for a hundred million dollar spending increase for compensation when revenues other than real estate taxes are increasing by only seventeen million dollars. The justification is to provide an excellent education. We ask, an excellent education for whom? I guess you don't have my testimony, is that correct?
No, we don't.
Okay, well, if you do get it, there are two graphs on the back I hope you'll take a look at. On a scale of one to one hundred, excellence is generally considered to be a number greater than ninety. I have provided two graphs showing the SAT percentile and the percentage of students prepared for college for each FCPS high school. Only one high school has an average SAT score above the ninetieth percentile, and only one high school has more than ninety percent of its students prepared for college. FCPS, of course, does not post this on its website. The graphs also show that achievement decreases as a percentage of Hispanic and African-American enrollment increases in a school. It is evident from the graphs that the FCPS curriculum discriminates against Hispanic and African-American students. At the League of Women Voters 2015 Mason District Forum, the incumbent Mason District Representative, who is now the school board chairman, stated that FCPS does not know how to close the minority student achievement gap, and further stated, if we did know, we would become millionaires. Both statements are false. There are curricula that can close the gap, but FCPS refuses to use them because they are phonics-based, employ drill, and teach facts. If a school board member proposed using these curricula, they would not become millionaires. They would lose the Democrat endorsement. Maria Montessori closed the achievement gap in the slums of Rome. Both Arlington and Prince George's have public Montessori schools. Fairfax County does not. Siegfried Engelmann's reading mastery and Duster arithmetic has been demonstrated to close the gap, and Edie Hirsch's Core Knowledge Curriculum, which teaches American and world history every year from K through six, has also had success. The Taxpayers Alliance has advocated this for twenty years, during which FCPS has been raising taxes but not achievement. How ironic that black lives and Hispanic lives do not matter to this liberal Democrat school board. Finally, the same flawed curriculum that suppresses minority achievement also results in children of all races being unnecessarily stigmatized as learning disabled. The curriculum drives upper-medial and disciplinary staffing and costs. Before asking for higher tax hikes, we ask you to fix the curriculum, which will save money, and so FCPS will indeed provide an excellent education to all students. Thank you.
We have Timothy Lepham to be followed by Eric Wolf Welch and Paul McLemmons.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Lepham. I'm the proud parent of two students at Great Falls Elementary, one of whom you heard from earlier. I think the benefits, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of retaining language immersion. I think the benefits of the language immersion program have been obvious by all the students who spoke. I'm going to speak to some more practical points. I've followed this budget process very closely. I don't envy you your jobs as a physician and a small business owner and a former deputy medical director. I'm used to looking at budgets, particularly some very bleak ones. I know it's going to be tough. I'd like to offer three practical points. First and foremost, anything that gets cut from the budget ought to represent an actual cut, not just something that's a cut on paper that doesn't actually save any money. Secondly, we ought to not be cutting the most popular. We ought to look at the least-used things. And finally, whatever we cut ought to be something we can recover from whenever fiscal sanity is restored to this county. It's crazy that we only get seventeen cents on the dollar that we send to Richmond. Someday, maybe we'll get some of that money back, and we can have all the things we deserve. Now, with specific regard to language immersion, we've got about four thousand students in that program, but Fairfax County gets a huge benefit, financial benefit, because half of those students, two thousand of them, live out of district. I'll use my own family as an example. My daughter's in third grade. You heard her earlier tonight. She is at Great Falls Elementary, which is not our base school. She's also in gifted. If language immersion goes away, she goes into gifted. My son also receives services. My son is not eligible for services at Great Falls Elementary. He's in speech therapy that we pay for privately. We go back to Cunningham Park, our base school, he's going to be getting those services, and they'll both be riding the bus. So you take two thousand students that are all going back to their base schools, that's a lot of teachers that have to be hired, a lot of buses that have to be run, it's a lot of money that's going to get spent, and the supposed savings of one point two million dollars is going to go away. Multiply that by two thousand students, and you're going to have a lot of costs. Also, the teachers, the language immersion teachers, are very dedicated. You're going to lose some of them. The average cost of replacing an experienced teacher is two years' salary. That's a lot of immediate upfront costs you're going to have to spend to replace those teachers that quit. I think it's pretty obvious that language immersion is popular. And to my final point about how hard it is to replace it, this is a program that's been decades in the making. If it goes away, it's an extinction event. We will have eliminated early language education in Fairfax County probably forever, and I don't think that's something any of us should be proud of. So I don't quite understand how it is we always end up with language immersion being at the top of the list, when from just a simple fiscal and practical standpoint, we're not going to save any money, it's going to be really hard to replace, and it's going to do not very nice things for our county. Thank you very much.
Eric Wolf Welch to be followed by Paul McLemmons and Chingyng Lu. Mr. Welch? Paul McLemmons? To be followed by Chingyng Lu and Rebecca Goldin.
Good evening. My name is Paul McLemmons, President of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I represent FCPS educators, including classroom teachers, specialists, social workers, school counselors, office support staff, school security, and paraprofessionals who want to continue the hard work to keep our schools running efficiently but feel overworked, underpaid, and overwhelmed. FCFT members would like to thank Dr. Lockard and his continued support to invest in our teachers, paraprofessionals, and support staff. As you know, a step increase forecasted at forty-four million for all eligible employees is a huge chunk of the FCPS budget. Add in the new teacher salary scales, classroom instructional support salary scales, and a one percent market scale adjustment for non-teacher scales, and you have another forty-eight point one million dollars. This is a chunk worth investing if we are to keep the most knowledgeable, energetic, and innovative professionals in our county and not lose them to surrounding school systems. As an art teacher, although my pay was lower than surrounding school systems, I still gave back to my school community by co-sponsoring the Guys Excited About Reading Stuff Book Club, plus sponsoring the First Lego League Robotics Club and Art Club. I was not paid anything extra for these services, but instead felt that my students deserved a diverse before- or after-school program in an area they were passionate about. How can we inspire our students to explore new and exciting techniques in education when we aren't willing to fund our teacher salaries? Teachers who go without an increase in pay are less likely to want to do extracurricular activities with their school community. That is sad when we have a diverse amount of skills throughout our system, and we can't utilize them because they aren't willing to donate any extra time. There are some FCFT members who teach band and strings. As the voice of the membership, I feel the need to speak up and ask that the band and strings program stay as is in FCPS. FCPS provides the finest music program in Northern Virginia, and taking away the program from fourth graders would be a hit to the program. Here's a statistic from DoSomething.org. Children who study a musical instrument are more likely to excel in all of their studies, work better in teams, have an enhanced critical thinking skills, stay in school, and pursue further education. FCFT also has language immersion teachers as members. FCFT would like to thank the school board for thinking about our language immersion program and supporting the decisions of the superintendent's budget task force to keep this program active in our elementary schools. Finally, FCFT does not support taking away any services that would harm the livelihood of teachers, paraprofessionals, and support staff. Our students come first, but we need these staff members to help guide the future of our students. Thank you.
Chingyng Lu to be followed by Rebecca Goldin and Valerie Flo. Chingyng Lu. Rebecca Goldin to be followed by Valerie Flo and Fiza Cadri.
Good evening, school board members. I am so grateful for the opportunity to contribute to this conversation. I'm a parent of four children in FCPS, two children who are TJ, and two children who are in elementary school in the Level Four AAP Center. I'm also a professor of mathematics and the former president of the Fairfax County Association for the Gifted. I want to say that both at the college level and through my own children, in FCPS, I see quite directly the benefit of the quality education that we've got used to here in FCPS, and specifically what FCPS does for gifted children. In making these budget decisions, please consider carefully the needs of gifted children, both emotional and academic, who learn differently and have distinct social needs. The Budget Task Force has made recommendations that will disproportionately affect gifted children. My youngest child, for example, won't be able to attend his school. My second youngest child may not receive busing, which puts me in a very awkward position. Our oldest two children might lose the eighth period at TJ, which is one of the places that they can ever see their friends because we live quite far from the school. So I do fear for those kids. I think that they will suffer emotionally tremendously by losing those services. I also am very concerned with the busing to these Level Four centers because of, specifically, if we don't bus the kids to the Level Four centers, they will fall apart and become only one school centers. If we have every school having a local Level Four program, it will not be the same quality as a center program. This is something that has come up many times, and I think we have to make a distinction between what we're seeing on the ground within these school programs and what we see in the language that we use to describe the curriculum. The programs are different because with small classrooms, with only one classroom -- sorry, with only one classroom of AAP Level Four students, we don't get the same social environment, we don't get the same academic environment, the teachers do not have each other to work off of, and generally speaking, there have been many reports that some of those programs are not implemented with fidelity. So we have a degradation of what it is that we're currently offering our kids. I think, in addition, the kids who will suffer the most are the ones who don't have parents with resources, who can bring them to centers if they still exist, or who can offer them supplemental education outside of the classroom. So for gifted kids, I think we really need to consider what that impact is going to be as you make those busing decisions especially. I also want to speak specifically to the proposal to increase class sizes just for AAP Level Four children. This seems to me, and to many people in our communities, a rather brazen attempt of people to level, to put onto these children the costs that you're trying to save by increasing those class sizes. These kids need to learn, they need time with their teachers like all children need. I feel really strongly that we have to be very careful with classroom size and recognize that without our teachers, we absolutely have nothing to offer our children. Right now, we already have, we have large classrooms. AAP has disproportionately many large classrooms, and I would hope that you guys could think a little bit about how all of these things are going to trickle down as we go forward. There are many considerations about how these programs are run that are a useful exercise to think about, who's in the programs, how do we implement these programs, and I would hope that in the coming months, we can engage in that conversation with people who are involved in those communities. I think many people felt that they were left out of this conversation to a certain amount of, number of people who don't feel comfortable with Level Four AAP and feel it's easy target to just remove that funding, but these kids also need to learn. TJ and our Level Four programs are jewels of FCPS. We want to maintain their funding and maintain the quality of what they're offering our kids, and I feel particularly that my kids really need these programs. Thank you very much.
Valerie Flo to be followed by Fiza Cadri and Molly Alonzo.
Hi, my name is Valerie Flo, and I'm representing the Community of Solutions. We are a group that was started in 2013 in response to suicides at our school. Since that time, we've worked with parents from other schools, county agencies, and local nonprofits, and we focus our attention on topics such as homework and academic stress, building resiliency, teen-to-teen communication, concussion safety, and crisis support. We'd like to highlight those revenue deficit options that would possibly erode the recent positive efforts of FCPS to support mental health and substance use prevention. Eliminating high school start, late start times, this, we feel, has helped our teens immensely. I know that my kids personally, I have two high schoolers, they've enjoyed being able to sleep in that extra time, as well as not having to run across the street, our busy street, or wait for the bus in the dark. Relating to mental health, substance use tiered interventions, prevention, intervention, and postvention, we're very appreciative of all the new practices that FCPS has introduced in the last five-plus years to address the growing prevalence of mental health issues and the mediating threat of substance use. We've identified five budget reduction options that would endanger this process. We are very much against reducing psychologists, counselors, and social workers. These staff save lives. Also investigating wraparound services provided by FCPS. We feel there's not enough services to meet demand elsewhere in the county. Also, reducing high school assistant principals with the tiered intervention program, the administrative staff plays a very vital role in this process. Related to building protective assets for student wellness, the Fairfax County Survey has identified how important protective assets are in mental health, wellness, and prevention of substance use. The cuts proposed that would reduce after-school activities and sports are contraindicated to protect our youth. Proposed cuts that may offer opportunities to reduce academic pressure. Eliminating all FCPS payment for AP exams, this would save three point eight million dollars. We've discussed this a lot at Community of Solutions. We feel that there is an opportunity to reduce the pressure that students feel to oversubscribe to AP classes. The number of students graduating have completed eight to twelve AP classes, and that's troubling and unnecessary, creates a lot of undue stress. FCPS can save money and deescalate this trend by paying for fewer AP tests. Eliminating AP exam tests are one option, limiting payments to five APs per student in their high school years are another. And I had various other things that I wanted to discuss, but that's in my testimony, and I thank you for your attention and for your work on the budget.
Thank you. Fiza Cadri to be followed by Molly Alonzo and James Alonzo.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Molly Alonzo. I have four children who attend FCPS schools. I'm incredibly concerned with how thinly spread the school nurses are to support our children in children in the schools, and I want to give you some background information on this topic. FCPS has 196 schools with a school health aide in each clinic. Fairfax County Health Department provides FCPS with only 65 nurses. Each nurse is forced to cover over 3,300 students, covering three to five schools. 20% of the students in FCPS have medical needs. These numbers do not align with professional standards, national averages, nor the Virginia Code, which requires. The industry standard is one nurse to 750 healthy students. The number goes down when you add illnesses. This is backed by the American Academy of Pediatrics, American Nurses Association, Centers for Disease Control, National Association of School Nurses, Parent Teacher Association, and National Education Association. No one disagrees with this standard. Currently, the Virginia State average is one nurse to 837 students. Ours is 3,300. Additionally, if you were to rack and stack the 50 states and drop FCPS among the 50 states, it would land below Utah, the 49th state. In 1995, the Virginia Code was amended to direct school boards to strive to employ or contract with local health departments for nursing services consistent with the ratio of at least one nurse per 1,000 students by 1999. For the last three years, Fairfax has cited in its lines of budget that the low number of nurses has had a significant impact on developing healthcare plans, providing training to enable kids with health needs to attend school. This trend has been getting worse over the last several years, and there appears to be no plan or budget line to fix the lack of school nurses in FCPS schools. Public schools have a responsibility to accommodate the students with healthcare and meet the needs of the students so that they have a fair and equal access to the education. I recommend at a minimum FCPS budget for additional 131 nurses this upcoming school year, so that it places one nurse in each school. While this may seem like a big commitment, failing to support our children's health needs often results in lawsuits, office of civil rights complaints, and other actions which have larger financial impacts. Please adequately, appropriately, fairly staff the schools with nurses. Thank you.
James Alonso to be followed by Nancy Traynor and Matthew Dunn.
Hello, members of the school board, and, well, if he returns in term, Superintendent Lockard. My name is James Alonso. I'm a parent of four students in FCPS. You just heard the testimony of my wife. In addition to the benefits for children with needs and the necessity of school nurses to remove barriers that they have to receive an education, I would encourage you to read the July 14 Journal of American Medical Association study on the benefits of public school nurses. They found studying a population of 933 schools with 477,000 students, that for each dollar spent in school nursing, there was a $2.20 cost avoidance for the population served. That was from reduced medical cost, avoidance of loss in parent productivity, and avoidance in loss of teacher productivity. I think Fairfax County Public Schools, as you heard in an earlier statement, has already recognized the value of nonteacher support for student well-being. Fairfax County Public Schools already funds physical and occupational therapists, they have psychologists, they have social workers. I don't understand why we don't fund school nurses. Frankly, the decision was made at one point in the county to have that done through the Health Department. The Health Department has failed in that, as you've heard, with 64 nurses for the school district, and I really think that the... I challenge the school board to take up that challenge to support students. That's not the Health Department's mission, it's your mission to ensure their access to education. I don't envy you. It's a challenge, I think, to figure out where to find it in the budget. I went through the budget documents for '18. I actually did the prior years, going back all the way to 2009. So I appreciate the availability of those documents. There's a couple items I would ask maybe for a closer look at and maybe even more information in the budget submission so that the public can read it. One, the teacher staffing reserve of $20 million, the instructional assistant reserve of $2 million. There's an unspecified salary supplement for $1.1 million. There's a salary placeholder for $11.3 million. None of this is me challenging the request to raise pay for school employees, not challenging some of the initiatives or other support. These are just unspecified placeholders that sit in the budget, as well as a contingency school materials reserve of $2.2 million. So I would hope maybe in clarifying somewhere in that $40 or $50 million that in those reserve funds, there might be some funds available to fund school nurses. Additionally, there was other professional services. It was $22 million of the $30 million contracted services. Again, it was unspecified as to the details. And while I appreciate the flexibility reserve of $8 million in '16 and $10 million in '17 not being in the planned budget, they seem to materialize every year, so I think that could be another source throughout. So again, I ask that you... Challenge you to look into public school nurses rather than relying on the Health Department, and also that you look at the cost benefits of that in the July 14 Journal of American Medical Association study. Thank you.
The next speaker is speaker number 15, Nancy Traynor, to be followed by Matthew Dunn and Russell Jones.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Traynor, and I'm the co-chair of the Education Committee of the Fairfax County Federation of Citizens Associations. With me is our President, Tim Thompson. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Federation's Board. We would like to commend the proposed budget's focus on maintaining instructional quality and improving the pay of FCPS employees while not targeting established programs for major cuts. We agree that compensation is very important in attracting and retaining a quality workforce, and to the extent that funds are available, we support improving FCPS employee salaries. As in years past, we also urge you to explore flexible compensation packages, since younger employees may have different needs than employees who are closer in age to retirement, and creative compensation packages could help recruit and retain staff without any additional spending. If the proposed budget is not fully funded, we strongly urge you to spread the shortfall around the FCPS system rather than targeting particular established programs. We believe all stakeholders should share in sacrifice to ensure that the cuts are fair and equitable. In the past, we've seen programs pitted against one another, forced to engage in interest group politics. You may have seen a little of that this evening. We hope you will fully reject that approach. We believe one of the strengths of FCPS is that it provides services in different programs based on what helps each child educationally rather than a one-size-fits-all approach. It would be a sad state of affairs indeed to start eliminating these programs that are a part of the fabric of our county and have succeeded over the years in meeting each child where they are. In the longer term, we join you in your efforts to diversify the revenue base in Fairfax County, which could improve funding for our schools. The Federation's 2017 legislative package proposes equalizing the revenue generating authority of counties with that of cities. Currently, Virginia caps the tax rate that counties, but not cities, can charge with regard to cigarettes, lodging, and admissions. For example, Fairfax County can charge a county tobacco tax of up to $0.30 a pack, whereas a number of neighboring cities charge much higher amounts. Alexandria charges $1.15 a pack, the city of Fairfax $0.85 a pack, and Falls Church $0.75 a pack, to name just a few. We hope we have your full support in these and other efforts to diversify FCPS's revenue sources. Thank you so much for your collective service to the children in our communities and for all the time you spend on various school matters. We look forward to working together to help support our schools.
Matthew Dunn to be followed by Russell Jones and Elizabeth Hornsby Graham.
Dr. Lockard and members of the school board. I'm Matthew Dunn. I'm a parent of three kids in the Fairfax County Public Schools, and I am also the lead organizer for Fairfax Flags. I'm here not to advocate for the maintenance of language immersion. I'm here to advocate for its expansion. Our public schools today are marked by diversity and inequality. Over 50% of elementary students speak a language other than English at home. That's from the FCPS report. Think about that as elementary school today. Think about that five, 10 years from now, that'll be a high school in the future. And approximately 25% of our students qualify for free and reduced-priced lunches, and we have dozens of Title I schools in our district. I would say let's build on our strengths, and let's ensure that every kid, every kid in Fairfax County gets a quality education. Fairfax County is the gold standard for language immersion around the world. Other countries, other states have adopted programs based and modeled on ours. But if you look at Fairfax County, we haven't expanded language immersion in a significant way in decades. We really haven't, maybe one, two at a time. But if you look at other surrounding jurisdictions and other countries, other states, you see a rapid expansion. DC, Arlington, Prince George's, Montgomery County are all expanding their foreign language programs. Similarly, New York City is at 175 programs, 93 added since 2012, 2013. North Carolina, 94 schools as of 2014, '15, and Utah, 118 schools as of 2014, '15. We are no longer the leader, we're now a laggard. But why are they expanding immersion? Is it because globalization? Sure, we all want to train a globally competitive workforce. That's particularly important in difficult economic times because we need to attract new businesses and persuade existing businesses to expand. But no, that's not the most important reason. The most important reason is because it is a cost-neutral way to close the achievement gap. Let me repeat that. Two important things. Close the achievement gap and cost-neutral. How do we know this for sure? Because there was a federally funded study by the Department of Education of an immersion lottery program in Portland Public Schools. 19 schools, 10 elementary, five middle schools, four high schools, across a variety of languages, not just one language, found that students randomly assigned, randomly assigned to immersion, outperformed their peers in English reading by about seven months in grade 5 and nine months in grade 8. Other studies have shown improved working memory, superior executive control, and selective learning. But here's the most important fact, it's cost-neutral. You have the world-class program, and you have the resources because it's not going to cost more. The $1.9 million in the Budget Task Force is illusory, and you can provide a quality education. So I would say to you, every Title I school, every kid in every Title I school should receive language immersion so that they can have a bright future. Let's do it today, let's get it done, and let's make sure all of our kids have a bright future. Thank you.
Russell Jones to be followed by Elizabeth Hornsby Graham and Austin Isaac.
Good evening. My name is Russell Jones. My daughter is in second grade in the German Immersion Program at Orentont Elementary School in Springfield. I strongly encourage you to support the full range of programs that make Fairfax County Public Schools great. These programs include foreign language immersion and advanced academic programs such as AP and IB classes, among many other programs. With regard to language immersion in particular, this program strengthens students' critical thinking skills, provides students with a better understanding of other cultures, and offers students a competitive edge in career choices and professional development, and it does so in a cost-effective manner. Reducing or eliminating the language immersion program as a means of balancing the FCPS budget is a terrible idea. For one thing, eliminating this program or advanced academic programs will damage the academic reputation of FCPS and may damage the economic competitiveness of Fairfax County. States across the country are increasing language immersion programs with an eye towards producing a multilingual workforce that will enhance their economies. And even mediocre school districts offer language immersion, AP and IP classes, and other quote "specialty" programs. Reducing or eliminating language immersion and other specialty programs will place FCPS students at a competitive disadvantage and may make Fairfax County a less attractive place for families and businesses alike. For another, eliminating language immersion is inconsistent with FCPS's vision statement, which includes giving students quote "a broad spectrum of opportunities to prepare for education and employment beyond high school," enabling students to quote "compete in the global economy," and providing a quote "well-rounded education that goes beyond basics and encompasses the arts, technology, communication, and critical thinking skills." Finally, eliminating the language immersion program is an inequitable and ineffective way to balance the FCPS budget. It will be highly disruptive academically and socially for the nearly 5,000 children who participate. Moreover, given the small size and cost-effectiveness of the program, cutting language immersion will do very little to reduce the FCPS budget deficit. We all must make sacrifices in the current budget situation, but these sacrifices should, to the greatest extent possible, be spread across the system so that no one group is disproportionately affected. In short, I urge you to support the continuation of programs like language immersion that underlie FCPS's reputation and tradition of excellence. Thank you.
Elizabeth Hornsby Graham to be followed by Austin Isaac and Megan Turkati.
Dr. Lockard and school board members. My name is Elizabeth Hornsby Graham, a parent of two FCPS graduates and a strings teacher at Daniel's Run, Wakefield Forest, and Canterbury Woods Elementary Schools. Tonight, I speak to you as co-chair of the Fairfax Arts Coalition for Education, or FACE. Thank you so much for your past support of the arts and specifically the strings programs in our schools. It was disheartening, though, to see the 4th grade strings on the list prepared by the Budget Task Force again this year. I question the $2 million listed as the savings for cutting 4th grade strings and the impact on the elementary schedule. First and foremost, there are no 4th grade-only strings teachers in Fairfax County. There are 126 strings teachers teaching 4th through 12th graders in every school in the county. If the 4th grade strings program is cut, every school would still require a strings teacher to teach the older students. Would cutting one grade allow teachers to serve an additional school? That brings me to scheduling. Most elementary schools in the county have integrated strings classes in the specials block, giving regular classroom teachers their daily planning time or team meetings. For example, I begin my teaching day at either Daniel's Run or Wakefield Forest. I teach three-hour-long blocks, 6th and 5th and 4th. I pack up and drive to Canterbury Woods where I teach blocks of 4th and 5th and 6th. The classroom teachers at these schools all have their planning meetings or team meetings or planning time while their students are spread out with the specials teachers, which include bands and strings teachers. The elementary special schedules are very carefully managed, with most schools having band and strings itinerants for half a day. This aligns with the special classes for the upper grades. A $2 million cut would mean each string teacher would have to add at a minimum one additional school. This means taking strings off the specials block, as it would be impossible to drive to three schools a day. Additionally, abandoned strings teachers could not be scheduled at the same time, classrooms would not be available due to launch-lunch periods, and cafeteria is not available for teaching spaces, et cetera. Through FACE, we contacted all elementary strings and band teachers to identify schools that include bands and strings in the specials block. Out of the 132 responding elementary schools, we have learned the following. Eight schools use 3rd or 4th grade strings for teacher planning, but not for the upper grades. 106 schools include bands and strings in their specials block. Combined, 114 of the responding schools include strings and bands in their specials block for 4th grade. If 4th grade strings is cut, our 7,700 4th grade string students would need to be with additional teachers. This would mean you would need to hire staff, so please ask yourself, is there really a $2 million savings to cutting 4th grade strings?
Austin Isaac to be followed by Megan Turkati and Holly Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Austin Isaac, and like many here tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Fairfax Arts Coalition for Education with a special emphasis on retaining the 4th grade strings program. I am proud to say that as an orchestra teacher here in Fairfax County, it is my privilege to work with these talented, hard-working, and inspiring students on a daily basis. However, tonight, I am troubled by a sense of déjà vu. It was just last year that removing funding for 4th grade strings was brought up as an option to deal with our most previous budget deficit, and it is unfortunately appearing once again as an option for our current deficit. I would like to state some facts that Mrs. Hornsby Graham just actually stated, that our inherent flaws with the proposition of discontinuing our 4th grade strings program that I would like to note has been flourishing since 1967. And if you take a look around the Commonwealth, string programs are few and far between, and we have a very fine crown jewel in our finance program here with 4th grade strings. Out of the 147 elementary schools in the county, FACE was able to get data from 132 about their 4th grade string schedules, and like Mrs. Hornsby Graham said, please keep in mind that itinerary elementary string teachers do not just teach 4th, they teach 4th, 5th, and 6th. And some even teach 3rd grade as well. And some even teach 3rd grade as well, which is absolutely amazing. Out of the 132 elementary schools we have data on, 114 use strings and band instruction time for classroom teaching planning. That is huge. At first glance, it seems that if 4th grade strings were removed from the budget, thousands of core elementary teachers would lose their planning period. However, FCPS will need to maintain state-mandated planning time, which would most likely result in the hiring of part-time teachers to cover the supervision that was lost from music specials. That would defeat the entire point of saving money by eliminating 4th grade strings in the first place. 4th grade strings is an integral part in the jigsaw puzzle of countywide elementary scheduling and cannot be simply removed without having a countywide and detrimental effect. Imagine playing an exhausting game of Jenga where the stack of blocks has now grown to an incredible height that you'd never thought was possible, and you're forced to take the block that will ultimately have this complex skyscraper plummeting to the floor. The stack of blocks is elementary scheduling, and then, yeah, the last block is 4th grade strings. I remember that last year a concern was that teachers in our county were leaving to work in other districts for a variety of reasons, and I would like to speak about my personal experience, which has been quite different. One of the main reasons that I wanted to teach in Fairfax County is because of the strength of the arts programs, and in particular the strings programs. And one of the main reasons that we can have secondary programs with students performing at not just a musical level, but an artistic level, is because students can start strings in the 4th grade. As a student, I was home-schooled through the 8th grade. I graduated from public high school where I fell in love with orchestra. I attended community college, and I finished my studies in instrumental education at James Madison University. As an educator, I have taught strings for elementary through high school students in a private school, and I have taught elementary through high school strings, string students in a public school setting. Through that collective and varied experience as a student and an educator, I can tell you without hesitation and with all the conviction in my heart that what our 4th grade students here have in Fairfax, that they have access to a 4th grade strings program is amazing, and I would implore you to keep 4th grade strings in the budget. Thank you for your time.
Megan Turkati to be followed by Holly Taylor and Kevin Engdahl.
Good evening. My name is Megan Turkat. I live in Lorton. As a parent and a school employee, my family is impacted on many levels by the difficult budget decisions that must be made, and I appreciate your thoughtful consideration. I really don't envy you. I've been sitting here since about 6:15. Once again, we find language immersion on the list of potential cuts. On paper, you see that this will bring a savings of $1.9 million. On paper, the savings come from reducing staff and program materials. On paper, cutting immersion affects a small number of students, employees, and school sites. On paper. In application, eliminating language immersion will cause a ripple effect that offsets any short-term savings and has long-term implications as well. In the short term, the facilities dashboard says about 1,600 immersion transfer students will potentially be returned to their base schools. Have the impacts of removing hundreds of students from underutilized buildings like Fort Hunt and London Town been accounted for elsewhere in the budget? What are the costs for boundary change studies and public meetings? What is the cost for studying and adjusting bus transportation? Has the impact of students who qualified for Level 4 AAP opted to remain in immersion but might now choose to participate in AAP center instruction been considered? How many school employees will be affected? Classroom teachers, art, music, PE, teacher assistants, assistant principals, as human resources are reallocated? Some may say that the financial impact of eliminating immersion is negligible because it's only a handful of students per site. On average, sure, but 22 elementary schools will have more than 20 students returned, including Dogwood Elementary, 35, Hollins Meadows, 36, Center Ridge, 37, Newington Forest, 28. This reshuffling is not cost-neutral for fiscal year 2018, and shifting the costs of educating these students to different budget line items in the future eliminates opportunity, not expenditures. FCPS was ahead of the curve in establishing immersion programs and is renowned for excellence and leadership in public education. Families choose to live in Fairfax County because of the rigorous and diverse opportunities in our school system. Language learning promotes cultural understanding, and as reported in the Wall Street Journal, a multi-year study that began in 2007 found that native and non-native English-speaking students in two-way immersion programs scored higher in reading and math than students in non-dual language classrooms, regardless of their ethnicity or socioeconomic status. School systems both nearby and around the country are recognizing the benefits of immersion on student achievement and expanding their language programs. I'm asking you tonight to not move FCPS in the opposite direction. Thank you.
Holly Taylor to be followed by Kevin Engdahl and Max Oppenheimer.
Good evening, school board members, and thank you for letting me speak with you this evening. I'm Holly Taylor. I live in Centerville, and I teach in the Westfield Pyramid. Here are a few examples of how cutting 4th grade strings would impact my community. One, the Bull Run Elementary String Schedule provides five hours of FCPS mandated planning a week to classroom teachers with 4th grade strings. Strings classes are built into the master schedule. Almost every school in my pyramid operates on a similar or modified block like Bull Run Elementary. Most string teachers travel in the afternoon to a different school. Ask principals how difficult it is to pair string teachers with two schools due to the complexity of the master schedules in FCPS. If a third school is added, it is impossible to split. A day can be divided into morning and afternoon, but no FCPS schedule can accommodate a strings teacher in the master schedule for the lunch block. Three, if more schools are added, how are you going to coordinate schedules of strings teachers who split their time between the secondary and elementary schools? Who is going to pay for coverage when schedules are altered, as they frequently are, for testing, assemblies, and weather delays? These are all financial and logistical concerns that need to be answered before such drastic cuts are made. More importantly, strings is one of the top-quality programs we offer our children in FCPS and therefore should not be sacrificed. I present to you two recordings taken today. The first is a middle school orchestra consisting of students missing a year or more of elementary strings, and with this size orchestra, research suggests we will attain if you make this The second is an average middle school orchestra we offer in Fairfax County thanks to 4th You can hear the difference a year makes. In the Westfield Pyramid, our string students are doing amazing things. The first and second-place bases in the 2016 All-State Orchestra started in 4th grade at one of our Title I schools. One of our students was selected by the National Symphony Orchestra Fellowship to perform for one of the greatest cellists of all time, Yo-Yo Ma, that master class will be next week. I ask you to think about the difference a year makes. Think about your own children or grandchildren learning how to read. Would you delay them for a year? How about speaking or writing? Does a year make a difference? What would cutting out the 1st grade academics do to FCPS? This is exactly what is being proposed to our instrumental music program. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you in the future for the betterment of our children. Thank you.
Kevin Engdahl to be followed by Max Oppenheimer and Paul McMahon.
Good evening. I am here before you as a representative of the Fairfax Arts Coalition for Education. I am also a band director at South County High School. As members of the school board, you all are faced with the task of working to finalize next year's budgets. With funding decreasing yet again, you all are put in the difficult position of deciding where you need to cut spending. It has been proven that music is an activity which helps students to succeed in the academic arena as well as promoting good leadership skills and self-discipline. Keeping 4th grade strings is essential to students building a foundation for this success. I am a former FCPS student who went through the band program between 6th and 12th grade, and I can safely say that I would not be the person I am today without having gone through one of our county's fine music programs. I learned the value of hard work and what it takes to master a craft, and along with that, I learned the truly human act of how to emote, a unique opportunity that you can't always find outside of the fine and performing arts. Removing 4th grade strings from this curriculum would take the opportunity away from many students. Although I am a band director, I have many students that began their musical journey in 4th grade on an orchestra instrument. I know this is true for all band programs across the county. These students would not be the same were it not for that first year of instruction. While they chose to change over to band, I can guarantee they learned valuable musical lessons that can transfer over to any discipline. The foundation that they built is valuable for the years to follow. While I am a teacher in the county as well as a tax-paying citizen, my main reason for being here is the students. One of the main reasons I got into teaching music was to give back to students what my school and my music teachers gave me, and I want to see them to continue to have that chance. Thank you.
Max Oppenheimer to be followed by Paul McMahon and Brian Heller.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Max Oppenheimer. I'm here tonight as a representative for the Fairfax Arts Coalition for Education. I am also the orchestra director at Oakton High School and a product of the world-class music education system we are so fortunate to have here in FCPS. Today, we are faced yet again with the choice of keeping or eliminating one of the foundational blocks of our entire system-wide music program. As we all know, learning music at an early age vastly contributes to our students' success as they grow and mature in music and in every academic field. We know this from sound, evidence-based, peer-reviewed academic research. Music engages young minds in a very special way and gives them a skill set that they can call upon for the rest of their lives. In my experience, learning music engaged me entirely, more than video games at the time, sports, or any other activity I participated in. And I know there are thousands of FCPS students who are just like I was. Well over 7,000 are enrolled in the 4th grade strings program alone. These are kids for whom music can make a real difference. The fallacy that by eliminating the start of these students' instrumental music education saves the school system millions of dollars is difficult to believe, and I hope the board will request real statistics from our Fine Arts Office before they make their decision. In at least 100 of our system's over 130 elementary schools, 4th grade strings is a part of the time allotted to classroom teachers for planning. Its elimination would not provide any savings, but rather a shuffling of resources towards additional part-time teachers to provide the supervision necessary to maintain state and nationally mandated planning time. This would further upend the scheduling systems we have in place and would cause far more issues than it would solve. Furthermore, and most importantly, these are our students who do not yet understand but will learn from us how making music can encapsulate nothing less than the entire human condition and what it's like to be alive. As beautifully stated by conductor Michael Tilson-Thomas, "No other art form so unflinchingly looks at life as it actually is and how we actually feel it." That's what music can do. Any cut to this fundamental component of our diverse curriculum is an egregious and potentially harmful action that, once started, is hard to stop. It is unfortunate, it is an unfortunate reality faced by many school systems and one we in Fairfax County should seek to prevent. I would not be here today doing what I do if I didn't have the opportunity to start playing the viola, of all things, in 4th grade. I implore each of you to use your voice and your vote for these kids. This is something worth fighting for. I'm here today not for my job, but for my students and the future of music in the place we all call home. Thank you.
Paul McMahon to be followed by Brian Heller and Ed Sapristein.
Sorry, I lost track of where you guys were. Adam Chair, members of the board. My name is Paul McMahon. I'm a Braddock District resident. My extended family has lived in Fairfax County since 1967. My children are all Robinson secondary graduates, and I was president of the Robinson Band and Orchestra Parents Organization, supporting their 650-plus student band and orchestra program. Tonight, though, since my kids are all graduated, I'm speaking strictly as a citizen. I'm an advocate for a school program that provides quality education to all students, maintains a nationwide reputation for excellence, and strongly supports fine arts as a key element of the educational experience that prepares our children for the future. I don't see that commitment in the timing or prioritization of cuts the task force provided you for consideration. The high priority recommendation to suspend 4th grade strings programs is a poor decision that does not support the streak holes I just discussed. Over 7,000 4th graders are enrolled in the strings. Students eligible for free and reduced lunch programs are provided support to participate in this program. This early start is critical to their musical growth and continued participation in music programs at the middle and high school levels. That is important because participation in strings programs through high school aids these students academically, provides motivation to remain in school, develops math skills of all things, and helps prepare them for college. The projected savings to me also seem suspect. Itinerant strings teachers are still required for 5th and 6th grade strings, which significantly reduces any projected savings. The delay of education until 5th grade will then lower participation in middle and high school, and additional sessions of other high school subjects at a lower student teacher ratio must be included in your calculations. The required timing in your work documents is also problematic to me. The Budget Task Force proposed reduction decisions in January and February for this program. Certainly, the cut of an itinerant teacher program offered during primary teacher planning time can be made at the end of the budget process with all other programs. The budget process that Dr. Garza directed over the summer of 2015 was full of good ideas. Many of those ideas are not reflected in the current task force work products that I've seen. The menu of reductions and fee increases from September 2015 is a document worth reviewing as a start while you view additional changes to your current programs. I still have my copy. Finally, last summer Supervisor Herity on the Board of Supervisors penned a thoughtful op-ed discussing the joint challenge facing the school board and the Board of Supervisors. I don't take a position on any of the specific proposals he laid out, but I do support you and the Board of Supervisors working together to make good, fiscally responsible decisions. I thank you all for your time and this effort and this program, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Brian Heller to be followed by Ed Sapristein.
Hi, my name is Brian Heller. I represent FCAG, the Fairfax County Association for the Gifted, as one of the co-presidents. Several people before me have already spoken about some of these programs, but the things that we're here to support, programs that we want to support and advocate against cuts to include AAP center schools and bus transportation to them, late buses for after-school enrichment, TJ 8th period, AP and IB programs, orchestra, strings and band, foreign language immersion, class sizes, keeping them small, and teacher pay against teacher pay cuts. I know that's a lot, I'm not going to talk about all of them in the three minutes I have, but I'll just hit some key points. There are some potential misconceptions. I think there's some thoughts that maybe local Level 4 programs, if we put them in every school, that's an adequate replacement for an AAP center. We're here to say that on behalf of the roughly 2,500 people that subscribe to FCAG, we think that there's a difference between local Level 4 and centers. Some of those reasons are more obvious than others: the peer size, the critical mass, the size of the cohort. But it's also resources at a center that might not be available at a local Level 4. It might be parent involvement, it might be extracurricular activities, it might be the PTSA. But there are lots of things that make a bigger cohort or a more, a school with more resources a better fit for some of these kids that might feel like they fit in and they're not the one, they want to go to a school where there's a lot of kids like them, where it's cool to be a nerd, as some of my kids sometimes say. We also should not be in a hurry to rush to a decision to cut centers or to cut busing. We should make a data-driven decision. If you want to add some local Level 4 schools, that's fine, and then let's see what happens. If you keep the centers and you keep the busing to them, let's see what the people do and vote with their feet. If people are still going to the centers in large numbers, that is a data point that tells you, maybe they're not equal. If everybody stays in their local program and no one's going to the centers anymore, that gives you a different data point. So let's not be in a rush to close them. Let's give parents the option and find out with the data what really happens and see if these things are equal. Late buses, after-school activities, I also mentioned how valuable those are, whether it's at any school or a TJ in particular. Some of these, these are not just mere clubs, they're very academic in nature. You've got debate clubs, chess clubs, rocketry, robotics, and these are things that are very valuable to a kid's education directly. very valuable to a kid's education directly. And so we support funding those and keeping those alive and keeping that opportunity alive. Since I'm almost out of time, I'll point out that I have a lot more in my written remarks. I hope that you please take a look at them. And I will close just by saying that we shouldn't let accountants and accounting drive academic policy decisions. So let's keep the long-term policy implications and what's best for our kids academically in mind rather than making a short-term budget cut that could affect us in the future. Thank you.
Next to speak, who is Ed Sapristein?
Thanks. My name's Ed Sapristein, and tonight I'm speaking as an individual in the community and a parent of three FCPS graduates. It's a coincidence, but my comments are in support of keeping advanced academic centers and busing to the centers and also on eighth-period at TJ. It's a coincidence that I'm... But after the two speakers together. The centers have extracritical mass important for the special needs of students such as fostering added rigor and academic challenges for students at the higher end of the AAP program. This critical mass can be crucial in the classroom and also, as some have mentioned, in encouraging academic-oriented extracurricular activities. Elimination of busing to centers, which a couple people mentioned, will cause hardship for various families, including those the school system may particularly want to help rather than hurt. It could impact such families as those with low and moderate income, families where both parents work, a single-parent household where that parent needs to work, or military families with one parent overseas. It would be truly sad for families to know their high-performing child needs the added rigor and challenges of a center to fit his or her special aptitude, but the child just cannot get to that school. It's not an optional program, but rather one that's servicing the special needs of one segment of our student population. As to eighth-period at TJ, eliminating eighth-period harms a science and tech aspect of a science and tech high school. For example, in some examples, eighth-period helps provide extra time in science labs and research projects, like they mentioned, helps facilitate exploring things, helps with mentoring, and also helps with collaboration, which is more difficult in TJ because of to do this outside of school given the wide geographic area where the students live. While eighth-period has clubs, and people say there's clubs... Well, it's true, they have clubs. But some of those clubs focus on science and tech areas, as was mentioned, such as computer security, robotics, physics, engineering, aerospace engineering, and neuroscience. Some clubs, such as amateur radio, global health, model UN, and women in science and engineering, may not be as directly tech-focused, but they can help with developing a student's perspective and talents in society. What concerns me is that no matter how well-meaning the attentions are, decisions could be made which substantially harm these established programs that have helped our community's youth over the years and some of the other programs mentioned as well tonight. I worry the adverse impact of the decisions may not be fully realized until it's too late. Thanks for your collective years of service to the youth in our communities and for your patience, and other areas. Good luck.
Okay, before... We have just finished speaker number 61, and we have another 16 to go. Before I turn the gavel back to Mr. Anna Kofax, let me call the names of those speakers missing from earlier in the evening. Shae Dwyer. Karen Miller. Eric Welch. Cheng Ying Lu. Fiza Cardrey. Mr. Anna Kofax.
All right, our next three speakers are Jennifer Garver, Amy Fuji, and Manuel Gonzalez.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jennifer Garver. I live in Ms. Schultz's district in Springfield. I have two children who attend Orange Hunt Elementary School. Liam's in 3rd grade and Connor's in 1st grade. They both participate in the German immersion program at Orange Hunt, and they both really love it. Increasingly, they are speaking German at home and with our new neighbors, two families who chose their homes with the immersion program in mind after having been stationed in Germany so that their children could continue to develop and maintain their German fluency. I love to see how thinking and learning in a second language has given my boys a challenge that makes them eager to go to school every day. So as you no doubt have guessed, I'm here today to advocate for preservation of the language immersion program. I know you are facing what will likely be some very difficult decisions this budget cycle. I don't envy you, as others have said, but I urge you to retain the language immersion program. It is highly regarded, in high demand, and helps teach students skills and values that are fully consistent with the FCPS portrait of a graduate. Please consider also the adverse long-term effects of eliminating a successful longstanding popular program that once gone cannot be easily replaced. The Budget Task Force indicated last year that eliminating the language immersion program could save $1.9 million, but I question the accuracy of that figure. Does it take into account the cost of reshuffling school placement and staffing when hundreds of students must return to their base schools and use FCPS-funded bus transportation? Does it take into account efforts that immersion school principals have made to mitigate the effects of attrition on staffing needs in the higher grades? Does it take into account how many immersion students have deferred AAP placement to remain in the immersion program and the costs of moving these students into an AAP center? If not, then it's inaccurate to say that $1.9 million in savings would be realized. I would argue that immersion is a highly cost-effective way to teach kids a second language, and rather than being eliminated, it should be expanded so that all students who want to participate can do so. I urge you to retain the language immersion program in the fiscal year 2018 budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amy Fuji, followed by Manuel Gonzalez and Latisha Elcock.
School board members, my name is Amy Fuji. I'm a Fox Mill Elementary School parent of a 6th grader and a 3rd grader. Thank you for being here tonight to listen to me and other members of the community. Frankly, I wish there was no budget crisis and I could be focused on other advocacy tonight, but I was here last year and I'm here again. Our community feels like it has certainly changed over the last year. I find myself reflecting on history and the future. My husband traces his childhood in Seattle back to his uncle, who spent years with his family in a Japanese internment camp in California during World War II, until he joined the Army to prove his loyalty to the United States. From his uncle's stories, we know that our future came at a cost that no one should ever have to pay again. I walk into Fox Mill Elementary School and I see Japanese words on the wall. I see kids of all colors and backgrounds learning about a culture that is different than their own. And as children, they don't know that different is bad. For them, difference is opportunity. It's the opportunity to know that there is more out in the world from which to learn, grow, and lead. As America debates its future, one thing is clear to me: We are going to need these kids, the ones that can see opportunity in difference. Now is not the time to take cultural learning out of our schools. Now is the time to save language immersion.
Manuel Gonzalez, Latisha Elcock, and Sue Capper.
Good evening, members of the school board. Good evening, fellow county citizens. My name is Manuel Gonzalez. I am the parent of a 1st grader in Laurel Ridge Elementary School. I am here to talk about the proposal to eliminate the language immersion program from some Fairfax County public schools. I would like to argue about the need to evaluate more carefully the benefits that will be lost once the program is eliminated versus the savings that this elimination would imply. Without a proper cost-benefit analysis, any decision regarding the program could be ill-informed and likely detrimental to the optimal allocation of taxpayers' resources by the county. First, let me talk about the benefits of a language immersion program using results from research in the area. There is a relatively long history of investigation to evaluate the impact of foreign language study on outcomes related to intellectual and academic achievement. It would be impossible to cite all of this research here, so I will mention just a couple of examples. There is an article from 2005 published in the Early Childhood Education Journal that says that programs like immersion, FLECS, and FLEX can be useful to improve a student's achievements in reading and math. In particular, foreign language study leads to increased cognitive skills. It is linked with higher achievement in other academic areas, and it is correlated with higher achievement test scores. There is another paper published in the Review of Economics and Statistics in 2005, which reports that college graduates who can speak a second language have a 2% to 3% wage premium compared to those who cannot. Just to have an idea, if you assume a 1% real salary increase per year and a 2% real return over four years, this premium will imply an extra $51,000 in a retirement account if you speak Spanish, $77,000 if you speak French, and $128,000 if you speak German. In my remarks, in my written remarks, you will see a figure that illustrates this. So these research results influence the expectation of parents, which in turn affect the decision to relocate to Fairfax County or some specific school area because of the language immersion program. The relocation decision affects housing demand and property values, which are direct sources of income for the county through property taxes. Without the possibility to fulfill these expectations, county citizens who value this program may no longer find beneficial to live in the area affecting property values and therefore county income. So I just want to say that instead of just keeping the program, as other speakers have said, I want to... I would like it to be expanded, and my written remarks elaborate on that. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Latisha Elcock, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify this evening. I am here today to express my unwavering support for the advanced academics program. I am especially invested in the AAP centers as I see firsthand their benefit to children who have been identified as requiring Level IV services. Many families choose to send their children to the centers when they learn that their base schools are unable to offer a full-time AAP curriculum. This is especially true when the local Level IV only has a small number of students at each grade level and is thus unable to form full classes of Level IV students. One of the greatest assets provided by the centers is the academic cohort. The existence of at least two classes per grade level has long stood as the minimum standard for a successful advanced academic program and was reiterated during the recently conducted evaluation of FCPS's AAP by George Mason University and William &amp; Mary Center for the Gifted. Let's be honest, without the cohort, the trained teachers, acceptance of and adherence to the pedagogy, and full-time course offerings, part-time local Level IV, with or without differentiated and pull-out services, is not the same as full-time Level IV. Is this body willing to tell students, "No, you are no longer entitled to the rigorous academic instruction that was originally available to you simply because the budget task force recommended and this body chose to balance the budget at your expense?" Additionally, I am very curious about the motivations of the budget task force. How many of its members have school-aged children? Of that number, how many have Level IV identified students? I cannot help but believe that once you are removed from a situation, it's very easy to dismiss completely the significance of the program. I hope my voice grants you another, an informed perspective from which you may glean information. Continual improvement is always an important ideal, but all proposed revisions must be thoroughly researched and well-considered. Two years ago, AIPAC submitted to this body a checklist that provided guidance on what new centers should have in place before opening. I've attached a copy of this checklist to my testimony and strongly encourage this board to review it, as the standards could easily apply to the establishment of a local Level IV today. This checklist was prepared by AIPAC members, which is made up of AAP stakeholders, including teachers, principals, and parents. In the two years since it was prepared and submitted to the school board, nothing has changed, and the requirements are still very applicable to our current situation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Sue Capper, followed by Jenna Day, and then Elizabeth Carlson.
Good evening. My name is Sue Capper, and I am president of the West Potomac High School PTSA. I'm here tonight to urge you to not increase the high school staffing formula. West Potomac is a diverse community of 2,600 students with an FRM population of 43%. Our school is at 132% capacity, making us one of the most crowded high schools in Fairfax County. This year, using the current staffing formula of 30.5 students per teacher, we began the school year with 57 classes with 32 students or more, 18 classes with 33 students or more, 6 classes with 34 students. Additionally, 98 classes were over the school's planned maximum cap for those classes. Because of space shortages, many overcrowded classes were housed in old, narrow trailers, making it difficult for all students to hear and see the instruction provided. Unfortunately, FCPS has used class size increases to balance a budget for years. According to the 2017 WABE Guide, this has resulted in Fairfax County having the highest staffing formulas in our areas, higher than our nine neighboring jurisdictions. Raising class size again now will have far-reaching negative consequences. It will further weaken the quality of education provided in our schools, making it harder for our students to succeed beyond high school. It will also make it even harder to attract, hire, and retain good teachers. Why would a teacher choose to come to Fairfax County schools if he or she could work in Arlington, Alexandria, or Prince William schools for higher pay and smaller classes? As you know, Fairfax already is having trouble hiring teachers, having opened this school year with over 200 teaching positions vacant. We understand that the budget climate is challenging and that budget-cut decisions require the wisdom of King Solomon, but class size increases simply cannot continue to be the driver of the budget without causing irreparable harm to our school systems and our students. We urge you to take class sizes off of the table and look for other ways to bridge the budget gap. Thank you.
Jenna Day, followed by Elizabeth Carlson and Melissa Adams.
Dear members of the school board, first and foremost, it's good to see you all again. If you're half as tired as I am, you're exhausted. I truly have enjoyed getting to know the members of the school board through various venues and have enjoyed sitting with you at concerts, meeting you individually, and following your social media accounts. You are amazing and very hardworking people. Thank you for all that you do. Tonight, as I stand before you once again on behalf of the 4th grade strings curriculum in Fairfax County, tonight you heard my youngest daughter Savannah, a rising 4th grader, and tomorrow you hear my father Johnny Johnson, three generations. And though it is only three generations, I know I am also speaking for generations past to instill the love of music in our souls, and I definitely speak for generations to come, for I know that as long as I am living, I will do everything in my power to touch the lives of people with music. As a mother, business owner, face parent liaison, and a community member, I have seen firsthand the positive impact a 4th grade strings program has had on children. My life has been touched on a daily basis with stories of 4th grade string successes. Recently, I attended a strings concert at Crossville Elementary. At this concert, it was standing room only. The entire front was filled with string students, and the rest of the gym was filled with parents, grandparents, friends, siblings, and teachers who were all there to hear the students play. I had volunteered to help with the string students and noticed a particular 4th grader that I have seen at school. This particular young lady has some special needs, someone who just consists of muscle coordination. There she sat with her cello propped up and her bow poised, ready to play, with the biggest grin on her face. She played her heart out that afternoon. Did she play every note correctly? I don't think it matters. She was there, part of a group, part of a community, part of the school, making... She was there, part of a group, part of a community, part of the school, making music with her peers and that amazing grin on her face the entire time. I also stand before you this evening to advocate for our Strings teachers. I work with these teachers on a daily basis. The passion for what they do cannot be described in words. If it is possible to go the extra mile every day as you teach, this group of teachers definitely does. I have seen them inspire children, teach eye-hand coordination skills, to count, to play well with others, to follow instructions, to face their fears, overcome obstacles, but more importantly, to find their passion within their hearts, all in less than an hour once a week. And yet, this is the only subset of teachers that live in constant fear that they are losing their jobs every year. They have been consistently chosen as a target. It is time to recognize and realize that not only, that the 4th Grade Strings curriculum is not an option any longer. It is a curriculum that has been proven countless times to be effective and a positive influence on our children. It's been proven to be beneficial to their brains and social development. It is something every child in the 4th grade can participate in. It is a curriculum where you have some of the finest teachers in the world, working every day, every week with our children. It is not enough for us to be convinced that 4th Grade Strings is essential to every child. We must act and thereby be converted to it. As a side note, I want you also to know I was able to attend the VMEA Conference, the Virginia Music Educators Association Conference, and there were four programs represented from Fairfax County. One was a high school with Max Oppenheimer, it was with his orchestra. Austin Isaac and Bowman Collins were in the middle schools, and Chris Weiss took his high school band, and they were very well represented and I was able to attend their conferences. Thank you.
Elizabeth Carlson.
Good evening. I want to use my time this evening to express, as the parent of two children who have gone through the Strings program, as someone trained in child psychology and as a musician, why the program is so essential and why a 4th grade start is so vital. For one thing, there are the logistics. Many elementary schools use block scheduling so that students miss no core classwork whilst attending Strings. 4th Grade Strings is a part of the block that provides teachers with a 60-minute planning period. If this is no longer part of the block, additional staffing will be required in order for classroom teachers to retain this time. Strings teachers teach 4th, 5th, and 6th grade students while at each school. Elementary String teachers currently serve an average of almost two and a half schools each, and scheduling these teachers will be extremely difficult if the Strings program is cut from the 4th grade. Principals will lose options with regard to when their schools receive String instruction. Additionally, students cannot be pulled out of Language Arts or Math, further limiting when String classes may be held. Pedagogically speaking, early instruction makes sense. Students learning to play an orchestral string instrument must use both the left and right hands. The hands need to be taught separately. Because of the large amount of technique required to build the fine motor skills used in learning to play a string instrument, a 4th grade start is critical. Children who start Strings instruction earlier become more fluent than later starters. In addition, all of the orchestral string instruments come in fractional sizes, which allow smaller and younger students to begin instrument study. Socially speaking, a large number of our students participate in the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. These students currently join the Strings program in the 4th grade. While some may opt for private lessons to begin a string instrument at this age, eliminating the 4th Grade Strings program ensures that only those children whose families can afford private lessons learn a string instrument. Through the Instruments for All Program, large numbers of economically challenged students are able to experience learning an instrument. Cutting the 4th Grade Strings program will limit educational opportunities for these at-risk students. And finally, speaking personally, I have watched both of my daughters bow and pluck their way through the 4th Grade Strings program. There is a discipline and a perseverance that comes from the study of a musical instrument that cannot be replaced by core subject homework exercises. The commitment my daughters made to learning an instrument over the course of a full academic year, practicing independently and performing with a larger group, was impressive for children their age, and the delight and pride in their hard work extends well beyond the twice-yearly concert stage afforded them as part of this program. They are learning even now that practice does indeed make perfect, and that try, try again will not fail them, both at the music stand and in math class. Were it up to me, a lifelong musician, this instruction would be mandatory. As it is most certainly not up to me, I implore you to keep this valuable program intact so that the citizens we are raising now have the earliest possible opportunity to greet this challenging world with the proven knowledge that they can tackle big obstacles creatively and, yes, with a song in their hearts. Thank you.
The next three speakers include Melissa Adams, Regina Cordell, and Christina De La Rosa.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Adams, and I'm a 4th grade classroom teacher at Canterbury Woods. This is my first time speaking to the school board, and I'm speaking for my students tonight. I am also the mother of a 3rd grader, and I am speaking for my son tonight. I ask you to keep the 4th Grade Strings program. As a teacher, I have seen firsthand the benefits of playing an instrument in 4th grade. My students experience the joy of making music at a time when they are cognitively and physically ready. When I watch them perform with their classmates, it's quite an experience. Canterbury Woods has an AAP Center, is the deaf and hard-of-hearing center, and is a neighborhood school. Yet in Strings concerts, these diverse populations all come together as the children are simply musicians. From what I have read, the intellectual and creative benefits to music at an early age is clear: increased creativity, discipline, spatial intelligence to help with math, developing motor skills, help with memorization, and language development. My own son, a 3rd grader, has shown interest in music since he was little. Joey has attended concerts at our school for years and is excited for his chance to play in the fall. I want Joey to start music lessons as soon as he can. Sadly, as a Fairfax County public school teacher, my salary does not allow for me to pay for private lessons for him. There are also many FCPS families who simply cannot afford private music lessons. Abandoning early music training widens the gap between the haves and the have-nots, and in theory could contribute to continuing achievement gaps. There are so many benefits that there must be some other place that the budget can cut so many children can benefit from music at an earlier age. Please do not take 4th Grade Strings away from the students or my son. I recently shared with friends that I would be speaking here tonight. One friend's son asked me to read this letter to you on his behalf. My name is Luke Riley. I am 20 years old and study neuroscience and double bass at the Johns Hopkins University and its Peabody Institute. In 2006, I, like many of my friends, started playing instruments at Canterbury Woods' 4th Grade Strings program. When my mom texted me today that FCPS has considered cutting this program, I was initially in still am saddened and concerned about the implication of taking this valuable resource away from young students. Being handed an instrument at a young age, in my opinion, is one of the most valuable things that the school system can give students. In early elementary school, exercising self-control, discipline, and teamwork is not something that always comes easily. Playing in the orchestra started helping me develop a level of self-confidence that nothing else ever did or has done since. Going to orchestra with my friends was one of the most positive experiences during my time at FCPS. And there's more to the letter that's included in the notes that you have, and thank you for letting me speak.
Regina Cordell, followed by Christina De La Rosa and Kayla Grigsby.
Hello. My name is Regina Cordell, and I am an elementary Strings teacher in Fairfax County. Nearly the entire 4th grade at each of my three schools signs up for Strings with over 7,000 4th Grade Strings students in the county. Tonight, I am telling you why I believe 4th Grade Strings, the program, is vital to our schools and to our community. As part of the music education curriculum in Fairfax County, students start in kindergarten learning how to sing and keep a steady beat. In 1st and 2nd grade, the students learn how to read music notes and rhythms, and in 3rd grade, they get to apply their musical knowledge to the recorder. But most students aren't satisfied just learning the recorder, and in 4th grade, choose to take the next step in their musical growth by learning to play a string instrument. With all of the musical knowledge the students have gained, 4th grade is the perfect time to begin Strings. 9- and 10-year-olds have a bubbling excitement for school and for learning that starts to fade as the students approach adolescence. I love teaching 4th Grade Strings students because of their infectious enthusiasm to learn, problem-solve, and figure things out for themselves. During a typical 4th Grade Strings class, I will hear something along the lines of, "Miss Cordell, I figured out Star Wars and Ode to Joy by ear," or, "Miss Cordell, guess what? I made up a song on my violin about dinosaurs." Learning Strings instruments becomes an outlet for my 4th grade students to express their thoughts, ideas, and emotions meaningfully through the arts. Fairfax County has one of the best Strings programs in the country, and the program continues to grow each year. I have attended my colleagues' middle and high school orchestra concerts and have been amazed by the caliber of musicianship the students demonstrate as they perform college-level repertoire. In 4th grade, the students learn all of the basics of playing their instruments. Cutting this foundational year of instruction will have a very damaging impact on the success of the programs at the higher-grade levels. Even students who choose to take Strings for just one year benefit from the experience in numerous ways. They learn responsibility and accountability as they bring their instruments back and forth from home to school. They learn teamwork and collaboration as they create music with other students in orchestra. They learn time management and goal-setting as they plan out when and how to approach practicing and make goals for their learning and achievement. They learn creative and critical thinking skills as they discover how to improve during practice sessions through which they become self-reflective lifelong learners. All of these characteristics are traits that we in FCPS value in our portrait of a graduate. To discontinue 4th Grade Strings would be a grave mistake that could holistically affect many students and their ability to learn a skill that's benefits will carry through the rest of their lives. Early instrument lessons give students tools to express themselves and work toward self-efficacy from an early age. Eliminating 4th Grade Strings limits the potential of thousands of students who crave this type of creative, hands-on instruction. Thank you for your time.
Christina De La Rosa.
Good evening. My name is Christina De La Rosa, and I'm a resident of the district in Alexandria, Virginia, and have two children attending the Spanish immersion program at Rosehill Elementary. I am here as a Fairfax Flags member and for school parents whose circumstances do not permit them to be here to voice our support for continued funding and expansion of our language immersion programs in Fairfax County. You already know and will hear today how research shows that students gain additional cognitive academic employment benefits. There will be statements elaborating on the financial impact of continuing the program or eliminating it. I would like to offer our measure of success for the program from our firsthand experience. Last year, we traveled with our children to Mexico. It was their first international trip as elementary school students. The opportunity for them to practice Spanish in another country has provided an unexpected positive return from their experience. They felt empowered, translating for their father, who was a native French speaker. They learned that they could make a difference and help others who did not dominate the Spanish language as they tried to help people they met by helping them barter in the markets or helping them order food at the pool. They felt proud to be able to read signs as we drove through the city or looked at the dinner menu. For my oldest, it gave her the opportunity to learn to advocate for herself and her disability in another country and in another language. Valuable, immeasurable, important life skills for her. In our home, our rule is that conversations with mom are in Spanish. Since our trip, I've noticed our youngest, who feels more comfortable responding in English, every request and every question made to her in the target language is now initiating conversations and replying in Spanish. So I'm a very proud mom because it's working. Language immersion is working. As you work through this formidable task, please consider how eliminating the program will affect our children's development, academic, and future economic benefit, and reflect on the potential negative impact it will have for Fairfax County public school system. I ask you to continue investing in our children's future by expanding language immersion. Much gracias por ofrecer un programa de lengua en español. No tiene precio. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Kayla Grigsby, followed by Lily Del Campo and Molly Henry. Kayla Grigsby? All right, Lily Del Campo.
Good evening. My name is Lily Del Campo, and I'm the parent liaison at Mount Eagle Elementary. I have been serving Fairfax County School in this role since 1993. Not only am I a proud employee, but I'm also a proud parent as my three children are Fairfax County School graduates. When I started in this position over 23 years ago, there was a great need but no guidance about what to do. I spent my time engaging with parents and with teachers to help them understand the cultural differences so that students and their families could fully integrate and adapt to the new school system. I was, and I still am, a person who builds bridges and trust. Over the years, the parent liaison role has become increasingly more demanding. On a typical day at Mount Eagle, you might find me making arrangements for a parent to take their child to a medical appointment, making a home visit to check on a student who has been absent frequently, or meeting with a social worker and counselor to plan how we will get food to families in need. In addition to all this, I'm interpreting for all of our parent meetings, including IPs and teacher conferences. In October and November, I interpreted for over 200 conferences. Parent liaisons have provided a great service to our school system. However, Fairfax County School has not realized our value. We are taken for granted. For example, we do not currently have benefits, and our position is hourly with no option for a full-time contract. Because of this, many qualified parent liaisons have left their positions for a more dignified job, which include full benefits and salaried positions. Fairfax County School cannot afford to lose highly qualified parent liaisons. As I have shared, the demand for our position has increased immensely, but our hours remain the same. Although our pay band has slightly increased, it has not even begun to compensate the amount of time and hard work that goes into this job. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my fellow parent liaisons, asking that you treat us with respect, the same respect that we, parent liaisons, have given to the school system. I'm here tonight asking for: 1. A full-time contract option with longevity and seniority benefits; 2. Salary step increases consistent with other full-time positions; 3. Paid personal leave. The needs of students in Fairfax County Public School are increasing each year. Parent liaisons play an integral role in ensuring the success of all students. Recognize our critical effort with a respectable compensation and employment structure. Thank you.
Molly Henry, followed by Maria Mateus, and then Leslie and Peter Ryan.
Hello, everyone. First, I have to say that I understand making decisions about the budget is not an easy task, and I respect the huge responsibility you have. My name is Molly Henry, and I'm a Strings teacher at two amazing elementary schools in Centerville. I have the privilege of working with a variety of students from all different backgrounds. I'm here tonight to be the voice for my students who do not have someone here now. I'm here to tell you that 4th Grade Strings is not a luxury but a necessity. My main goal as a Strings teacher is not to train the next National Symphony member, but to help nurture and develop good citizens who learn real-world skills through music. So many of my wonderful students do not get the support that they deserve from home. Many have parents who are working multiple jobs to make ends meet. I have students who are homeless and whose parents are in prison. I have students with disabilities who have not been given a chance in life and who have been taught to just settle for safely existing. All of these amazing students come to Strings and find a safe place where they can be creative and have a supporting adult in their life. They learn responsibility, persistence, and how to be independent and creative thinkers. They learn how to collaborate with others and how to work They learn how to collaborate with others and how to work by themselves to accomplish a goal. We put on concerts twice a year that publicly display their progress and successes. These are skills that not only benefit our students now but are all required to be successful in the workplace. As teachers, we often attend trainings on how to incorporate real-world skills and goal-setting into our learning. Strings class already incorporates these skills, and we do it while developing a new talent that students can be proud of. I always remind my students to never forget how much they are worth because sometimes the world we live in tries to tell them otherwise. They feel wanted and a part of a group in my classroom. This year, I have two students in particular who have major behavior problems and are pulled out of the general classroom on a daily basis. They have not once needed to leave my room to take a break, and now they are excelling on their instrument. They're not doing this because I have some magical answers for classroom management. They're doing this because they're engaged and they are invested in the choice they made to be in Strings. My students choose to sign up for my class, and for some of them, this is their first time they get to make a major life decision. You may think pushing off beginning Strings until 5th grade isn't that big of a difference, but it is one more year that these students have to be looked over and can fall through the cracks. Strings, arts, sports, and all other non-core subjects are sometimes the only reason our students put on a brave face and come to school that day. Please do what is right for the students and keep 4th grade Strings. And if you would like to see this face-to-face what we really care about, we do have a 4th grade Strings concert at Centerville Elementary this Wednesday at 7:00, and you're all invited. So thank you.
Maria Mateus, followed by Leslie and Peter Ryan.
Good evening, school board members. I have not met one parent liaison who is not passionate about her work and about helping others, who doesn't care about working extra hours and do not get paid for it, who is always getting out of his or her way to attend seminars, conferences, information meetings, who is devoting his or her weekends and family time to attend community events and learning new skills to be more supportive with the family they work with. I have met parent liaisons who are not immigrants and know the struggles of getting adjusted to a new system, even when you come from a different state, and they see the need in assisting and educating parents. Parent liaisons help educating parents, not enabling them. They support staff members who are overwhelmed with such a big load of students needing many different services to enhance their performance in school. When students need to talk to someone about sensitive and personal matters, they need someone from their own or similar culture to listen. They don't always need counseling or guidance, but just to be listened or to be referred to the right person or program. That is when parent liaisons could help as filters for the support staff. When you come from another country, it's not always easy if you don't have someone who understands your culture. It's definitely not about knowing another language and helping as an interpreter. We all know it's much more than that. It's about understanding the culture and giving them the tools to better help their children to become successful in school. And I don't think we need more evidence of the results of parent involvement in education. When you see the faces of hope in the parents you are assisting and the gratitude they have when you give them a hand and refer them to a program they need, you realize the difference you're making and the impact you could cause. Families who are new to the country love to help, but they don't know how unless someone gives them the venues to do so, and parent liaisons know the different ways to make that happen. I am a teacher, but as an immigrant and despite my knowledge of English and my education, I struggled in the adjustment process when I moved to the U.S. with my family 17 years ago. When I found out about the parent liaison position in my country, I decided to become one. I wanted parents to feel welcome and not to have fear to ask questions and to feel part of a community and a society, because that is when you get positive results. I loved my job with all my heart, and I worked for almost 12 years as a parent liaison. I recently left my position, as many others, because of the need of health coverage and benefits. You cannot turn your back and ignore the reality we face daily, especially in these times of uncertainty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leslie and Peter Ryan? Leslie and Peter Ryan, are you here? No? All right. We have six no-show slots, and we have two people signed up for those, so we still have four more. The next two speakers I have are Kimberly Ryan, Kimberly Adams, excuse me, and Allison Malzon. We still have four slots if anyone here in the audience would like to speak in those four no-show slots. Please see our clerks at the board. Ms. Adams?
Good evening, members of the school board, and Dr. Lockard in absence. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I'm speaking to you this evening as the president of the Fairfax County Council of PTAs. Tonight, you've heard from many of your constituents, those who have children in our schools and many who do not, and tomorrow evening will be more of the same. Two nights full of speakers. This should provide you with plenty of evidence that the programs in Fairfax County Public Schools that serve all of our children are considered highly important here in Fairfax County. We hope that you, as school board members, will support our interim superintendent, Dr. Lockard, and this budget, which was developed by him and in concert with our previous superintendent, Dr. Garza, the staff who work in your financial service offices, and many other FCPS departments. It was evident to me today on my trip to Richmond to meet with our legislators that many of those legislators who write the laws that govern our schools do not have an understanding of how much it takes to create and maintain a world-class education system. So many places across the Commonwealth do not have what their students need to be successful. So many districts across our nation are lacking what it takes to develop strong, healthy students who have civic minds and possess an innovative spirit. We know that our school system goes above and beyond to make our students successful. As a 17-year veteran educator in Fairfax Schools, a parent of two children, I know that every day, our school employees do amazing things and that our parent community supports us. Our students need these professionals who do their best to provide us with a future where our students are prepared to lead and our parents want them to stay. It is evident to me that in our school system, we do extraordinary things every day with fewer resources every year. We continue to make strides, but we've lost a lot along the way. Quality professionals with innovative thoughts and ideas. We want those bright minds that join Fairfax County Schools to stay and continue their great work within our school system, and we must compensate them for it. We believe that you, the school board, will do what's right and stand with the interim superintendent, stand with your community, and put forward this budget, which will do what it must for Fairfax County Schools, students, and families. I stand here as a parent. I stand here as a teacher. I stand here as a leader of the largest parent-teacher association in Virginia. We commend you, our school board, and those staff in Fairfax County Public Schools who do great things every day for our students, for every child, regardless of their zip code. We thank you for putting forward a budget, which will request what's needed for Fairfax County Public Schools, tries to keep us on a forward path of innovation and success, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Allison Malzon.
Good evening. Thank you all for your service to our schools and to our community. I'm Allison Malzon, and I first spoke to the school board seven years ago when my son was in kindergarten. Now, he's at Rachel Carson as a 7th grader. And what brought me to speak to you all seven years ago is what brings me here again tonight. I'm asking for your support for the World Language Program. The first time I spoke, I focused on the value of foreign languages as a skill, the cognitive benefits it brought to the average child, the relevance that Japanese has to our students, our community, and our nation. And I ended my three minutes by sharing with you that my husband and I were both born and raised in Fairfax County. We're both monolingual. This program is the only viable way for our children to become proficient in another language should we continue to live in Fairfax County. All of these strategic reasons are still true and valid tonight, but at this point in the program, I'd like to share with you how we have benefited from an enhanced community and the opportunities that this program creates. At Fox Mill, our students, families, teachers, and our administration are devoted to this program, benefit from it, and give back. And I have this long, long list, and I can't share it all with you because I don't have enough time, but some of these include singing and performing at the National Alberityum, the Cherry Blossom Festival. We have after-school clubs. Two of these after-school clubs were initiated, and they are run by high school students, former Japanese immersion students, our Taiko Club and our Japanese Cultural Club. We also have a matsuri, and some of you have joined us for that. I hope you came and saw our first grade sing, and maybe you tried some mochi, and you made a fish print or calligraphy. You might have watched karaoke or kendo. But I hope you came away from that event realizing that was no one activity that made it special. It was the community behind it. This program builds community, and that is so important here in Fairfax County today. Every student in our World Language Program can benefit from expanded opportunities unique to their interest in lives. The time we spent in Japan, everyone said my children both spoke very well with their pronunciation. And this was after 1st and 3rd grade. They didn't say they were fluent, but they said their pronunciation was amazing. My daughter, when she was eight, she told me, "Mommy, just want to let you know, I'm going to be moving to Hawaii. I'm going to become a dolphin trainer. It's going to be very helpful that I know Japanese because a lot of Japanese families vacation in Hawaii." This thought process just shows how wide this program can go, how unique it can be to individuals. Also being part of this program prompted our family to act on the opportunity to be a host family. We've had three Japanese exchange students, a young man from China, a teacher from China, and another young woman from Thailand. They're not just friends. These people are our family. This program starts with the skill of a language, cognitive ability. It enhances community.
If you can please finish up.
One sentence. It creates opportunity. It develops young minds, and it develops young hearts. And for all these reasons, I ask you to please continue to support our valuable World Language Program in Fairfax County Public Schools.
Next is Chin Ying Lu.
Dear school board members, my name is Queen Ying Lu, and I go by Ali, and I'm the president of Fairfax County Association for the Gifted, and I'm a mother to a 4th grader in the AAP Center at Willow Springs Elementary School and a 4th grader at Laurel Ridge Elementary School. And I'm here to share my concerns over the proposed cuts that will impact many academic and extracurricular programs, including bus services to AAP Centers, TJAS Period, and Foreign Language Immersion Program in the FCPS budget plan. Many of these programs have been the most important factors which made the FCPS one of the best public school systems in the country. It has attracted many people to live in the Fairfax County that has created additional revenues to fill various programs in the county. Cutting these programs will inevitably impact students negatively and will have a harmful effect to the county in the long run. Let's take the AAP Centers as an example. They have been long credited for creating an environment where the high-potential kids motivate and inspire each other, and that is extremely valuable and essential for these kids to succeed. Even though some FCPS schools offer local Level 4 programs, we have got feedback from the community that the local Level 4 programs are not the same as AAP Centers in terms of the broadness and depth of curriculums and the pace of instructional advancement, largely due to the different makeups of the students between the Centers and local Level 4 classes. It's especially true in less wealthy areas where there tend to be not enough Level 4 students to form a class in each grade, and they have to be mixed up with students from other levels. It's unlikely that the teachers will be able to meet the needs of the students at the different levels at the same time. Also, the local Level 4 teachers do not have peers to whom he or she could brainstorm and collaborate with, as in Centers. The AAP Level 4 programs will only be effective when there's a critical mass in terms of number of students and teachers. Keeping AAP Centers but eliminating the bus service to AAP Centers will make the inequality issue even more severe, since the less affluent families are less likely to be able to afford to drive their kids to the schools every day, time-wise or money-wise. There has been a widespread frustration among our members and other FCPS parents that even after the community has repeatedly voiced their concerns over cutting these programs, they appeared on the cut list again this year. On the FCPS website, the top leaf is that each student is entitled to an excellent education that meets he or her individual needs. Academically advanced students should not be the exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Burton, followed by Jill Anne Murray, and then Lori Bennebe.
Hi, my name's Lisa Burton. I am a member of FCAG, and I also sit on Fairfax County's AIPAC Committee this year. I have three children, two of whom went to AA Centers, and one who is a 4-year-old, and may or may not go in the future, we'll see. I just wanted to point out a few things that may or may not have been pointed out this evening. I think lots of people have spoken that local Level 4 is simply not the same as the advanced academic center. You have the criteria for the advanced academic centers. I just encourage you to use it when deciding whether or not those programs are in fact equal, because they're not. That's why there's two of them. Busing to AA Centers ensures equity of access to advanced academics to all students, not just those who can afford it, who can Uber their child, or can take off from work to get their child there. Cutting busing to the AA Centers will certainly increase the achievement gap that Fairfax County is trying so hard to close. I don't quite understand why this is on the chopping block when this is a stated mission for Fairfax County to close its achievement gap. And then I would ask that you consider not punishing your advanced academic students and their families because Fairfax County grew their AA program too big. It's not our fault, so don't take our busing. If you want to change the program, change the program. Shrink it. Make it smaller. Take it down to 5%. That's fine, but let's not throw the advanced academic babies out with the bathwater. Let's thoughtfully make changes to the program before just wiping out the busing and picking out the program until it slowly bleeds to death on the side. And also, cutting buses to the Centers does not eliminate the need to bus those particular children somewhere. They still have to sit on a bus, and so I would just like to ask or encourage, looking at the analytics that went behind the cost-saving measures, to make sure that it factored in the fact that those students still need to be bused somewhere. It's not a complete savings. They don't evaporate. They still have to ride a bus to school. That's it. That's all I have. Cutting busing is not fair to the students already in the program. I'm not sure it's legal, and I hope that you do not do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Ellen Murray.
Sorry. Don't know how I got caught off guard this late in the session. My name's Jill Ellen Murray. I'm a parent of three young children who are now all across Fairfax County. They are in language immersion programs. I have my son at Rose Hill Elementary. He's in 1st grade. He's seven years old. My two daughters, one is older, one is younger. Ella is at Laurel Ridge Elementary and the immersion program there. She's in 3rd grade, and she's nine years old. And my 2-year-old is now at a preschool in Falls Church, and we have the means to put her in there in its immersion program as well. It's called Communicat. A little bit of information about our family. We decided to make a potentially unwise choice to move across the county this summer to be closer to my husband's office. I work in DC. He works in Fairfax. I'm sure everybody around here deals with traffic. We thought- We thought for the long haul, living in this county, it would make sense to live closer to one of our places of employment, and we wanted to make our lives saner for our children. It is not so sane right now, and we're hopefully, you know, working through that, but I want to just give you one individual's and one family's perspective that we are, you know, driving all over the place to put our all into making sure that our kids can remain in the immersion program. We care about it. We care about it deeply, and we are putting our feet where our heads are and, you know, traveling all over the place. I think it's also important to know we live in Fairfax County as a choice. We live here because of the school system, and then we picked the specific jurisdictions that we live in because of the immersion program. I think, you know, I'm not going to restate some of the great statistics that Manuel Gonzalez and Matt Dunn stated, but I will, I think, point out the fact that English learners clearly are making great gains in closing achievement gaps. I know that the great duo at George Mason University that studies dual-language immersion, Thomas and Collier, actually did a number of studies on this topic and found, they stated that dual-language learning has been found to be the only method of second language acquisition to facilitate the full closure of the achievement gap between English learners and English speakers in primary and secondary education. So I ask you, you know, how does this affect our ESL costs over the long term if we have more investment in this? And Matt Dunn suggested what sounds like a crazy suggestion to actually expand access to language immersion, and I would say, let's think about that. Let's think about improving access for kids who, really, it would serve them better than staying in the mainstream. So thank you for what you're doing. I know this is a real challenge. I followed the debate all last year. And the last thing I just want to ask of all of you is that you be our advocates, continue to be our advocates when you're talking to the Board of Supervisors, and to try to do that really publicly so that we have a transparent view of the conversations that are going on, and we can join you in fighting for our schools. So thank you so much.
Thank you.[1648.25][1648.25](APPLAUSE)
Our last speaker of the evening is Laura Bennebey.
Hi, my name is Laura Bennebey. I totally did not plan on speaking. I don't know why I'm up here. I hate public speaking, so I will definitely be brief, and then you can go home. But my three daughters are in the immersion program. They're in first, third, and fifth grade. They were here earlier, but they had to leave because obviously it's pretty late. But immersion is very, very important to our family, and when we got into the program, I actually cried. I felt like I won the lottery, and I did, because it's a lottery to get in, and I feel like more people should have access to the program. My kids also cry. They cry a lot when this has come up the past two years about the threat of it being eliminated. My fifth grader cries. And my first grader, who likes to go around the house pretending to speak Spanish because she's not really speaking it yet, and singing, I hear her singing in the bathroom in Spanish, fake Spanish. But we don't speak another language at my house, so if they're going to get any other language, it's going to have to come through the schools. I myself learned Spanish for four years, starting in seventh grade, but it didn't stick because by seventh grade, it was like too little, too late. So I really hope that they can continue learning Spanish in the schools through sixth grade, and again, I hope it can be expanded so a lot more kids can have that same opportunity. Thank you.[1737.11][1737.11](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. And thank you all for coming out and sharing your comments this evening. We really do appreciate your hard work. We appreciate your passions, and we are listening. We will be back here on Thursday, February 2nd, this Thursday, beginning at 7:00, and we will have a work session on the budget. You are all welcome to come and attend there then as well. And again, thank you. Have a good evening, and this work session, this public hearing is over.
(INAUDIBLE)
Sorry, I misspoke. This public hearing is over for this evening, but it will continue tomorrow evening.[1776.47][1776.47](APPLAUSE)[1777.47]